Okay, good evening. We are back. Thank you for being here today for the regular Bellevue City Council meeting on September 17th, 2024. Before we begin, I'm sorry, I have to read my script. Before we begin, I want to say a few words about attending and participating in council meetings. Individuals are not allowed to disrupt the meeting. This includes talking out of turn or without permission, interrupting or making sounds when someone else is talking, or approaching council members or city employees who are staffing the meeting. If a person disrupts this meeting, I will give a warning and the person's remaining comment time, or ask the person to leave the meeting for the rest of the meeting. My hope and personal request is that the people will express themselves without name-calling, taunting, or disparaging others. I do believe the vast majority of people in our city are able to give their input without resorting to that kind of behavior and remaining civil and decent as they speak. So, thank you very much. And with that, City Clerk, could you do the roll call, please?
Mayor Robinson?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Malakutin, Councilmember Hamilton.
Here.
Councilmember Lee.
Here.
Councilmember Nguyen-House.
Here.
Councilmember Stokes.
Here.
And Councilmembers on.
Here.
Thank you. Councilmember Hamilton, will you please lead us in the flag salute?
Please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Do the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have three proclamations tonight. We have Eastside Welcoming Week proclamation, we have National Hispanic Heritage Month proclamation, and we have Belle the Bobcat proclamation. And what we'll do is, we will read all three of them, and then we will do pictures after. So, Councilmember Lee, will you please read the Eastside Welcoming Week proclamation?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Whereas welcoming week, September 13th to 22nd, 2024, is a nationwide celebration honoring the history, achievements, experiences, and struggles of immigrant and refugee throughout the United States. And whereas the cities of Bellevue, Issaquah, Kirkland, Redmond, and Sammamish have jointly celebrated Eastside Welcoming Week for the past eight years. And whereas Eastside Welcoming Week is an annual event bringing our region together to acknowledge the contribution of immigrants and refugees, and the role diverse communities play in fostering inclusion, belonging, and making people feel welcome. And these cities recognize the importance of ensuring that all residents feel safe, secure, and welcome. And whereas East King County is one of the most racially and ethnically diverse regions in Washington State, with over 35% of our residents coming from places outside of the United States, and 38% of residents speaking a language other than English at home. And whereas in our highly mobile region, nearly one in five residents have lived in their current residence for less than one year. And whereas realizing our vision for welcoming community requires actively addressing the daily challenges of those in our community who do not feel welcome, safe, valued, or included. And whereas historic and current impacts of individual institutional and systemic racism that results in harmful disparities in education, employment, income, housing, criminal justice, and quality of life, as well as sense of belonging. And whereas our community, like others across the nation, has structures, systems, and policies that contribute to injustice, racial inequality, and discriminating treatment against residents who were born outside, in another country, are Black, Indigenous, people of color, LGBTQIA+ and other identities. And whereas to capitalize on this diversity as an asset, our community must strive to create a culture and environment that ensure everyone can belong and thrive. And whereas there are many ways to celebrate Eastside Welcoming Week, including by amplifying the voices and experiences of immigrants, uplifting them to share their stories, and/or attending a welcoming week event. And whereas events and educational resources in our region help celebrate welcoming week. For a list of all regional events, visit Ninth Annual East King County Welcoming Week at Eastside for All. Therefore, the mayors of Bellevue, Issaquah, Kirkland, Redmond, and Sammamish, Washington, jointly proclaim September 13th to 22nd, 2024 as Eastside Welcoming Week, and invite the community to engage in opportunities during Eastside Welcoming Week and beyond to learn, connect across differences, and take joint actions to achieve a welcoming, equitable, and inclusive community. Signed by Mayor of Bellevue Lynn Robinson, Mayor of Issaquah Mary Lou Polly, by Mayor of Kirkland Callie Curtis, by Mayor of Redmond Angela Bernie. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Lee. We have two members of B-DAN who are here, Adam Diba and Coria Wong. Would you like to come up and speak?
Mayor Robinson, I'm a little bit nervous. Deputy Mayor Malakutin and council members. This proclamation for welcoming week is deeply meaningful for all immigrants here in Bellevue. As immigrant and workers who serve immigrant, I understand, share, and resonate fears of moving to a new place and to start a new life in a new place. And with gratitude and great honor, it is my pleasure to receive the proclamation here. It represents more than just words. It's a symbol of unity, acceptance, and support. Today is not only part of the welcoming week, but also Mid-Autumn Festival that celebrate harvest, family and friends will get together for dinner, to enjoy good food, company, and enjoy the full moon, which is believed the brightest and fullest of the year, that symbolize perfect unity. And we couldn't find a more meaningful day and more meaningful time to receive this proclamation. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hi, welcome. My name is Adam Diba, member of B-DAN and Executive Director of Africans on the East Side. Good evening, Mayor and Deputy Mayor and Council Members. It is an honor to receive this award, both as a member of the Bellevue Diversity Advisory Network and the Executive Director of Africans on the East Side. I am an immigrant that was born and raised in the Gambia. I immigrated to the United States 30 years ago and called Bellevue home. I raised three daughters here, and this award means the world to me and beyond. Being an immigrant in a country of the unknown, it's very hard when people don't understand what your values are and what you stand for. But I am very excited to receive this award from the city of Bellevue and also the cities across East King County. We'll continue doing this work and also serving with our cultures and our language so that people can know where we come from, and what we stand, and what our value. Thank you to you all for this.
Thank you. So, have a seat, and then we'll call you back up later for a picture. All right. Next up, we have, sorry, just a minute, National Hispanic Heritage Month proclamation read by Councilmember Son.
Yes, Councilmember. Whereas Hispanic Heritage Month celebrates the culture and contributions of Americans tracing their roots to Spain, Mexico, Central America, South America, and the Spanish-speaking nations of the Caribbean. And whereas the observation started in 1968 under President Lyndon Johnson, and was expanded by President Ronald Reagan in 1988 to cover the 30-day period beginning every year on September 15th. And whereas the month of September is significant because it marks the anniversaries of independence for the Latin American countries of Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, and Nicaragua, which celebrate on September 15th, Mexico on September 16th, and Chile on September 18th. And whereas Hispanic residents represent Bellevue's third-largest population group comprising almost 7% of the population. And whereas the cultural, educational, familial, and economic capital of Hispanic community members enrich all aspects of life here in Bellevue, on the East Side, and in the Puget Sound region. And whereas the city invites the Bellevue community to attend one of the multiple events the city is hosting in partnership with community organizations, including the Fiesta del Maíz on October 5th at Crossroads Park, and Aldea de la Muertos event on November 1st. Now, therefore, I, Councilmember Janet Son, on behalf of Lynn Robinson, Mayor of the City of Bellevue, Washington, and on behalf of its city council, do hereby proclaim September 15th to October 15th, 2024 as National Hispanic Heritage Month, and call upon all Bellevue residents to observe this month and celebrate the contribution of our Hispanic neighbors with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities.
Thank you, Councilmembers on. We have Alexia Gonzalez, Sayuri Aguilar Garcia, Ruby Mercado, and Angelé Fuentes from Sammamish High School Latino Heat to come up and speak. Are they here? Welcome.
My name is Ruby Mercado, and I am a student at Sammamish High School. It is an honor being here today to be able to celebrate the diversity of our beautiful Latino countries and communities. Throughout the years, we have shown perseverance and pride in our people, and we are thrilled to be represented through the proclamation with the help of those who can before us. We have cultivated pioneers of change, which has helped many of us continue to shape the future together, which is why I am so proud to be part of Latino Heat, because it strives to help us grow as leaders with our communities in a way that services others and gives us the space to create a cultural movement that will last for many years to come. We are celebrating 20 years since its funding in 2004, and we have seen how we continue to show up and fight for our voices to be heard.
Buenas tardes. Feliz mes de la erencia hispana. My name is Alexia Gonzalez, and I am a junior at Sammamish High School, as well as a member of Latino Heat. I am a Mexican-American. I am a proud member of the Latino community, as well as a theater kid. The theme for Hispanic Heritage Month this year is "Pioneers of Change: Shaping the Future Together." This is meant to capture our community's spirit of innovation, resilience, and unity. With this theme in mind, I would like to highlight the past and present champions of Latino youth, who are often invisible, are inspiring, and are the motivation we need to succeed in schools. I celebrate the following Latino leaders in this Hispanic Heritage Month. Jaime Escalante, who is famously known for his extra time and dedication that he put towards his students at Garfield High School. Alexandria Ocasio-Cortez, who is the youngest Latino woman to serve in Congress and who advocated for federal funding for Head Start and Trio Programs. And Washington's own Manuel Cadenas of Solutions by Cadenas LLC. And Valeria Pedraza, Vanessa Gomez, and Tina Morales of Youth Eastside Services Latino Heat. With our community, we wouldn't be where we are today, and together we must continue to make strides that will help all of us reach our dreams and aspirations.
Hello, good evening. My name is Sayuri Aguilar Garcia, and I'm a proud Mexican raised in Bellevue. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and Councilmembers, thank you for this opportunity to be here speaking on behalf of Latino Heat. I'd like to start with President Biden's words to showcase the significance of our community. During National Hispanic Heritage Month, we salute the vital contributions of the more than 62 million Latinos who help make our nation stronger every day. Latino history is American history. It is a story of hard work, family, faith, pride, and possibilities, and it is proof that there is nothing we cannot do when we do it together. With these words, we hope that you will join us in building our Latino community here in Bellevue throughout our work in Latino Heat. We hope to see you at one of our many events we host throughout this year, not to not only celebrate our rich diversity, diverse culture, and strengths, but to build awareness of our needs in this community and together accomplish change.
Is that it?
I'm not talking.
Okay, all right, thank you. We'll call you up after the last proclamation, and we'll do some pictures. Lastly, we have Belle the Bobcat proclamation read by Councilmember Nguyen-House.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, Belle the Bobcat.
We've got some stickers here, too. All right. So, whereas the city of Bellevue values its strong cultural and economic ties with Japan, including Yao in Osaka Prefecture, our sister city since 1969, and whereas Japan is one of Bellevue's top international markets for tourism, spending 64% year-over-year increase between 2023 and 2024. And whereas Bellevue's sightseeing, unique shopping, multicultural cuisine, safe and clean atmosphere, and access to the great outdoors make the city an appealing destination for Japanese travelers. And whereas Visit Bellevue, the official destination management organization for Bellevue, launched a marketing campaign for Japanese visitors to spur economic growth and promote overnight stays. And whereas Yorochara, our beloved regional mascot characters that have become popular in Japan for promoting tourism and local pride. Whereas the Bobcat is a magnificent wild feline native to the Pacific Northwest, roaming Bellevue's parks and open spaces, and admired for their strength, agility, and resourcefulness, qualities that parallel the spirit of Bellevue. And whereas Visit Bellevue has created a Bobcat mascot named Belle to serve as Bellevue's official Yorochara ambassador to symbolize Bellevue's natural scenic beauty while promoting the city as a destination for Japanese visitors. Now, therefore, I, on behalf of Lynn Robinson, Mayor of the City of Bellevue, Washington, and on behalf of its city council, do hereby proclaim Belle the Bobcat as the official Yorochara mascot of the City of Bellevue. Her birthday is May 15th, and she serves as an iconic symbol celebrating Bellevue's cultural ties to Japan, welcoming Japanese visitors to experience our world-class amenities, our recreation, and our charm. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Nguyen-House. So, we have three representatives from Visit Bellevue to come up, Brad Jones, Megan Adams,
Thank you so much. Good evening, Mayor and Council. We appreciate the proclamation on behalf of our Visit Bellevue and also our tourism industry in Bellevue. Over 14,000 employees in that industry. We really appreciate this. I think it's significant that in 2024, we were able to launch Bellevue's first-ever overseas marketing campaign that's tourism-related. We chose Japan as our target market for many reasons mentioned in the proclamation, and we've learned a great deal about marketing in Japan. We created a localized website, microsite, social media accounts, public relations campaigns. We held some events headlined by our chef ambassador, Chef Shota Nakajima, and he is also producing a lot of video content in Japanese that we're streaming in Japan. So, all that combined gives us the ability, through our new TPA funding and investment, to be able to launch this campaign in 2024 and into 2025. You're seeing on the screen Belle the Bobcat, that is our mascot. Belle was created and has been shipped to Bellevue. Unfortunately, she was stuck in customs for two weeks, but we broke her out of customs, and she just arrived at the airport about an hour ago. We were wondering about a police escort, but that was probably too much to ask. But she'll arrive tomorrow, and we'll officially launch her as a mascot around town at events, activities, and at our mobile welcome center. So, meet Belle. You have a sticker. We hoped she would be here for photos, but we'll find you later and get those photos with you. So, thank you very much.
Great, thank you. Would you like to stick around for a photo?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a motion? Oh, wait. Okay. I've got another script to read here. I'd like to say something before I ask for a motion to approve tonight's agenda. As noted earlier, the council participated in an executive session at the beginning of this meeting, and as a result of that discussion, we will be adding an item to tonight's agenda under Council Business to discuss the city manager position and determine next steps. So, with that, do I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda as amended to add the Council Business discussion?
I move to approve the agenda amended, adding an item under Council Business.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? City Clerk, do we have anyone signed up for oral communications?
Thank you, Mayor. We do have a few folks this evening. We have about 10 speakers, though I'll go over a few of the rules the council has in place. I believe only nine of those speakers are going to be able to speak based on what I'm going to tell you here in a second. So, the total time for oral communications is for a period of no more than 30 minutes, and people speaking to items on tonight's agenda will be called first, and then if time remains, people speaking to items not on tonight's agenda will be called. The presiding officer has authorization in both of those categories to give preference to people who have not spoken to council within the last 60 days, or who are speaking to items that will come on the council's agenda within the next 60 days. Each speaker is allowed up to three minutes to speak, and here's the key: Only three people will be permitted to speak to any one side of a particular topic. Airfield Park has four people signed up in support, so only the first three speakers will be able to be heard on that item. So, with that, I'll call our first speaker, who is Susan Papillardo.
And I'll just say that anybody who does not get a chance to speak certainly can email us or call us on the phone as well.
Good evening, council members, and my name is Susan Papillardo, and I live and play and work in Bellevue, and I'm the co-founder and president of the nonprofit Splash Forward. Tonight, you will consider the adoption of the Bellevue Airfield Park's master plan. This moment has long been in the making. As a partner to the city since 2018, I want to reiterate Splash Forward's support for your preferred Airfield Park master plan and the future home of the new Bellevue Aquatic Center. This will be a pool in a park with much-needed community amenities, along with preservation of forested areas. The park and its facilities will be a welcome oasis with something for all ages and abilities. It will be a major investment in East Bellevue that will connect our community, making it safer, stronger, and more inclusive. With the recent modified SEPA determination, the outline for developing the site to meet state ecology guidelines and establish environmental sustainability goals is well-identified. As a former landfill, it is clear that it needs to be appropriately and responsibly cleaned up and improved. Development of Airfield Park by City of Bellevue has long been promised to taxpayers since 2012. Funding to take the next steps for design and development are in the existing city budget and the proposed 2526 budget. Since March of 2022, Splash Forward has committed to be the city's private funding partner. Our role cannot be understated, as we've witnessed other communities fail when attempting to rely solely on public funding. As summer comes to a close and we reflect on all the ways we enjoy our local waters, it is a reminder of how important learning to swim and be safe around water is to everyone, and especially our diverse community. The struggle to find swim lessons, programming, pool space result in community with lower aquatic competence and higher risks of drowning. Bellevue is more diverse than ever. Over half of the U.S. adults have never had a swim lesson. Learning to swim, no matter your age, decreases the risk of drowning by 88%. Our community does not have enough access to affordable swim lessons and safe places to recreate. Affordable access to essential swim lessons, water safety programs, aquatic programs for all ages, affordable usage and program fees are top priorities, we have heard in our survey data. In the past week, we have collected responses for why people support the new Bellevue Aquatic Center. Here is one. I work for the Bellevue Fire Department, and we go on too many drowning calls for people who don't know how to swim. Having another pool and community outreach will give people the tools to enjoy our water in safer manner. A public aquatic center concept plan will give broad, affordable access to our community with programs to meet our aquatic needs. This facility will be like no other in the region. It will be a jewel in the Bellevue Park system for generations to come. We will continue to support the city, bringing stakeholder and community voices to the process, building capital and programming partnerships, and securing private funding. It's time to continue the process. We urge you to adopt the master plan tonight. Thank you.
Can I ask that we not, can I ask that we, excuse me, can I ask that we not clap or hoot? But you can wave your hands. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Ellie Wong.
Good evening, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Malakutin, and council members. My name is Ellie Wong, and I live in Lake Mott in Bellevue, Washington. Thank you so much for giving me this opportunity to share my personal story and why it is so important to me that a new Bellevue Aquatic Center be located at Bellevue Airfield Park. I'm a junior at Holy Names Academy. I'm a competitive swimmer on Bellevue Club Swim Team, and I've been working with Splash Forward since my freshman year to raise legislative awareness, working with Representative Tanah Sen, Representative Milan Thai, Representative Van Dennis Slatter, and also Representative Adam Smith, just to name a few of the people that we've been working with and have raised legislative awareness from. Firstly, I want to share my personal story. When I first wanted to join the summer league swim team with my friends, my mom was extremely hesitant. Despite growing up on Mercer Island, she never learned how to swim. In fact, she recalls almost drowning multiple times during PE and was afraid something similar would happen to me. As an immigrant family from Taiwan, we could not afford the pool membership fees or the lesson fees, and as a result of this, she didn't feel safe around our numerous bodies of water. She was embarrassed when she went out with friends, and she just missed out on all the recreational opportunities that Washington State has to offer. Water safety skills are not as widespread as they should have been, and scarily enough, my mom is far from alone from almost drowning. Drowning is the second-leading cause of unintentional injury and death in children and teens in Washington State. However, as Susan said, learning to swim can reduce this risk up to a whopping 88%. But we need to do our work. Our community needs how far outgrown the pools are built in the 50s and 70s. We need to bring a new aquatic center to Bellevue so that everyone, regardless of age, gender, race, and income level, can be safe around our bodies of water. Lastly, I believe that a new sustainable Bellevue Aquatic Center at Bellevue Airfield Park will be a great benefit to society because it will greatly improve the mental health and well-being of all community members. It will be a safe and inclusive space for everyone to hang out, have fun, exercise, and family-friendly indoor and outdoor recreational opportunities, and finally, keep our children safe. Thank you all so much for helping us bring a much-needed aquatic center to Bellevue. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Subba Sherakuri.
Hello, Mayor Lynn.
And, City Councilmembers, my name is Subba Sherakuri, longtime resident of Bellevue. I've been working with a group of volunteers advocating for pickleball courts in Bellevue, and tonight I am reading a prepared text from David Lai and Leslie Wong, who cannot be attending the meeting today. We want to thank the city council and the Parks Department for listening to our voice and implementing several dual uses codes from existing tennis courts in the last couple of years. These dual uses codes are being shared between pickleball and tennis players. We're also thankful that eight covered pickleball courts are included in the upcoming Airfield Park development. Park development. We are here to provide support to the city council in adopting the Airfield Park master plan update. Pickleball, the official Washington State sport, is still growing. It is particularly satisfying to see younger players joining the rank of older players in the sport. The eight dedicated pickleball courts in the Airfield Park will go a long way to alleviate the crowdedness of dual-usage courts in Bellevue. We are very excited with the prospect of having a cover over the courts. The pavilion-like structure provides all-weather pickleball-playing opportunities. The greatly increase in the usage of these outdoor courts would justify the additional construction in providing an even more efficient uses of funds and expensive real estate. We look forward to the completion of the eight-covered dedicated pickleball courts at Airfield Park. We are finally on par with the sport of tennis, which has the Robbinswood Tennis Center in Bellevue. Thank you for your attention and support. Thank you.
Thank you. That is our third and final speaker in support of the Airfield Master Plan. Our next speaker is Dale Shepherdson.
Good evening, council members. My name is Dale Shepherdson, and I've been a resident and property owner in Bellevue for 17 years. I'm not opposed to building an aquatic center, but I am opposed to building any structure on the landfill that disturbs the landfill cap or the toxic mass. This site has 18 suspected contaminants in the soil and six confirmed contaminants in the groundwater. Groundwater monitoring is required annually per the restrictive covenants. One well, EL 103, is located between the northern edge of the landfill mass and the French Drain near Ponday. I would like to read two excerpts from the 2023 report. At the French Drain, dissolved iron, dissolved manganese, and 1-4-dichlorobenzene were detected at concentrations above cleanup levels, which is also consistent with previous results. Dissolved arsenic was detected at EL 103 at .0316 milligrams per milliliter, which is greater than the cleanup level of .004. This well and the French Drain are located at the outflow of the landfill leachate. These contaminants are clearly coming from the landfill mass, and that we are still getting measurements above cleanup levels 60 years after the landfill closed indicates there's some nasty stuff under the landfill cap. As of today, 1,988 of my fellow Bellevue residents share my concerns. Bellevue Airfield Park will be built on the final parcel of the original 165-acre I-90 Bellevue Business Park. In the 45 years since the 1979 EIS, no business has risked private money to develop this final parcel. Projects have been built on landfills before, but my research indicates no aquatic centers, nor have any been built on an active Model Toxic Control Act site. I've been told that engineering can overcome the numerous high-risk issues associated with this building site. History shows otherwise. In September of 1982, the city issued an order to Cabot, Cabot, and Forbes to correct engineering and pollution issues after Phantom Lake was turned brown and fish died because of the runoff from what is now Bellevue Airfield Park. In July of 2001, the French Drain that collects leachate was found broken and not discharging into the sewer system as designed. Differential settling damaged the landfill gas collection system, requiring repairs in 2022, and Southeast 20th Place is currently sunk, requiring the city to place cones and high-water signs on the road when it rains. 60 years after the landfill was closed, differential settling remains an ongoing issue. I urge the council to-
Mr. Shepherdson, your time has expired.
Thank you. Thank you.
The next speaker is Valerie Martin.
I guess it doesn't matter. Hi, my name's Valerie Martin. I'm going to read a letter on behalf of East Gate resident Eric Fleishman. "As a resident," Eric says, "I'm oddly conflicted about this plan. On the one hand, I'm excited by the prospect of building a large aquatic center. All of us, including my family, would get great use out of this facility. On the other hand, the prospect of digging up the dump is terrifying. The hard truth is, we don't know what's down there, and we won't find out until we're into it. As a resident who is downstream, I'm concerned about what will be sent down this stream as the work unfolds. What's more, once the proverbial and literal seal is broken on this dump, the work is underway and is hard to turn back. My sense is that we don't really have a plan, because it's not the sort of thing you could truly plan for, not until you're in it. So I am afraid of the health implications of digging up this site for all of us impacted, and this is my overriding concern. What's more, we have no cap on the liability Bellevue will face digging up this site. As a taxpayer, this is terrifying as well. If messes are found or created, the city will need to pay huge dollars to clean it up. This might be the right thing to do if other options were not available. We have wonderful nearby sites, like, for example, Bellevue College. While not cheap to develop, it will almost surely be cheaper than dealing with the dump site challenges, and this Bellevue College site presents no health risks to residents. My conclusion: If it were my decision, I would place this aquatic center at Bellevue If the city proceeds with the Airfield Park location, my basic questions will be: What is the city doing to keep those of us downstream safe throughout the work? It seems all but impossible to guarantee. Even with the best of engineers, I know that things happen. This health-related question is the most top-of-mind and seems the right place to start. Other questions: Is the city educating residents about the financial and health risks of this project? Is the city insured for such fines? What is the budget for a large mess cleanup if discovered? Thank you, Eric Fleishman. On a personal note, I have been a Bellevue resident and school nurse for over 20 years. From a purely health and safety perspective, I believe this project is too big a risk. The city's responsibility should be to protect the community from health and safety hazards, such as cancer, poisoning, and other toxin-related illnesses. I urge you to let sleeping toxins lie." Thank you.
The next speaker is Kate Sinan. Ms. Sinan, oh, I see you raising your hand now. Thank you. Can you hear me? We can hear you now. Your time begins now.
Okay. I'm Kate Sinan with Save Our Meadow. I'm sharing an abbreviated letter for Bellevue legal resident, property owner, and registered voter Laura Pryor. She couldn't be here tonight. She says, "I am urging you to vote no on Resolution Number 10414, which proposes adopting the updated Bellevue Airfield Master Plan to include a new aquatic facility. Changing the plan to include a regional aquatic facility places an undue financial burden on Bellevue taxpayers for a facility that would primarily serve the region rather than the local community. Kirkland taxpayers where Splash Forward is headquartered have rejected supporting a community pool multiple times due to cost concerns. Bellevue taxpayers are now being put in a position to fund a similar facility, yet one serving a broader regional audience. The fiscal year 2023, 2 through 2029 Capital Investment Program, P-AD-83, references over $24 million in park levy funds for this project. The 2008 Parks Levy allocated $6 million for the East Gate area community park to preserve natural areas and add recreational amenities. Funding a regional pool was clearly not its intended purpose. The 2022 Parks Levy, Prop 1, allocated $10 million for planning community facilities like aquatics. Common sense suggested the focus would be on the community benefiting Bellevue residents. I voted to support this initiative, and I believe my property tax dollars would contribute to enhancing open spaces and parks within Bellevue. I'm concerned the levy is now funding a regional facility beyond the original scope, raising questions about whether it aligns with the initiative's intended purpose. Bellevue Airfield Park is a former toxic landfill. Environmental impacts and development costs of this site will place significant financial burdens on Bellevue taxpayers. Transparency is needed on how funds are being used, especially when alternatives like the Federal Way Aquatic Center are known to run at a loss in terms of building costs and ongoing operations. It's concerning that the city is spending money to assess feasibility of this facility when no bond or clear funding strategy has been proposed to cover construction and cleanup costs. Per the Capital Investment Program, $9,019,654 have already been spent, with plans to spend an additional $3.4 million per year over the next five years. This brings the total Parks Levy spend to $24,197,654. Where are these additional funds coming from? Prop 1 wasn't a blank check, and any deviation from its original funding allocations should align with the voter-approved vision. Spending more than what was initially portrayed is fiscally irresponsible, unless funding is clear-
Ms. Sinan, Ms. Sinan, your time has expired. We need to move on. Thank you. That is our third and final speaker in opposition or sharing concerns about Airfield Park. Our next speaker is Jessie Clausen.
Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and council members, I'm Jessie Clausen, and I represent ROIC, who is the owner of Crossroads Mall. I'm here to state our excitement and the participation of the upcoming Crossroads Subarea Plan. ROIC is specifically focused on owning and managing retail properties and creating high-quality and dynamic retail environments. I wanted to talk briefly about some of ROIC's thoughts as we get ready to engage in the neighborhood planning effort. Crossroads Mall is a special place. As you know, there's a great mix of larger and smaller businesses. Crossroads serves as a gathering place for the community and offers local flavor, unique products and services that reflect the neighborhood and you can only find in Crossroads. The core area of Crossroads currently features several large retail spaces, many of which are facing economic challenges. Designating this area for higher mixed-use development offers the flexibility to repurpose these spaces into mixed-use development when the opportunity arises, while still safeguarding our cherished local retail and restaurant businesses. You can already see what has happened in the Crossroads parking lot with the addition of residential units. This adds patrons to the mall and helps support the businesses there. It has made the mall much more walkable for more people. Overall, ROIC's long-term vision is to support the mall through increased density, continue to foster a strong sense of place by focusing on local retail businesses and services, and prepare for potential changes in the retail landscape, especially in response to the pressures from online shopping. We look forward to working with staff to create policies and a plan that will contribute to a more dynamic urban form with more open space, retaining small businesses, and creating more spaces for more retail and small and unique businesses, and provide additional commercial and residential options on the rapid-ride line. We are excited to get started on this plan and work closely with staff, neighbors, the planning commission, and ultimately, the council on the future vision for the Crossroads neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Joe Kuntzler, who's joining us online. Mr. Kuntzler, can you hear me?
Yes, can you hear me?
We can. Your time begins now.
Thank you for your public service. Joe Kuntzler here. I'm going to be very brief. I appreciate your welcoming resolution very much, and I think it's a good first step towards having a more inclusive community. I think the next step is that each one of the signatories needs to have their city council have clear rules against hate speech and other destructive behavior, and I think you all know who and what I'm talking about. We don't need Nazi salutes at public meetings. We don't need hateful rhetoric about Bellevue's wonderful deputy mayor, or mayor, or other public servants at our public meetings. I think when we go to a public meeting, we should be able to talk about what we, about the business of the community and focus on that. So, I know you've got a full calendar, and I really, really appreciate your public service, and I really hope the next step is to make our public meetings just as welcoming as the East Side Welcoming League resolution. I do need to advise you that I cannot see the timer on my Zoom screen. I'm going to check YouTube, and it's time-delayed, so I don't know what time I have left.
You have 10 minutes, approximately.
All right, thank you. I appreciate that. I also want to add, while we're talking about welcoming community and all, that it's important to keep investing in public transit. Public transit allows everyone to get around. I recently rode Sound Transit. Contrary to the claims of a certain Alex, it's full. There are a lot more people deeply appreciative of your courage in investing in Sound Transit and actually paying the fare and riding the Sound Transit. And with public transit, people can just get around and go from point A to point B without worrying about parking, without being a threat to others, and I think that's really important as well. I would also add that, you know, it's important to celebrate everyone, and that's what the red proclamation says. So I want to thank you for your public service and leave it at that, and also I endorse some of your resources for mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Our final speaker on our pre-registered list is Alex Zimmerman.
Hi, my name is Alex Zimmerman, and I lived this for 40 years. So, I think something happened here, you know what it means? We go to the wrong direction, yeah. And it's not only my opinion, approximately 20 percentage people support my opinion. Yes, thinking exactly identical. So I have right now a couple points what is can make life better in Seattle is more reasonable and common sense maybe come. For example, Mayor Robinson staying here for six years, I never see you have one Q&amp;A. People what is spoken here for 30 minutes, 10 people is not represent 150,000, never represent people, 20 percentage, who have different opinion, and for six years you don't have one Q&amp;A. It's a little bit strange to me, you know what it means? It's mean, you cannot do in this, or you don't understand business, because question what this people will be give to you, sometimes it's very complicated. You'd be very smart for doing this, and you don't do in this. I'm totally confused by. It's number one. Number two, right now we have a committee, you know what it means? What is talking about your salary? In my estimation, because I'm very good with money for all my life, I'm a Jew, I'm so sorry about this, theoretically, we pay each of you $700,000 per year. I repeat, we pay each of you $700,000 per year, and I explain to you where this money come from by detail. You have four meetings per month. It's approximately 10 hours, each meeting approximately two and a half hours. So this 10 hours, multiply by 10 years, 10 months, we come to 100 hours per year. Two months is you have vacation, and approximately you don't have meeting for five, six times per year, so this two months. So, we have pay you $35,000 for 10, for 100 hours. This come to 350 dollars per hour. This part-time job, so when we multiply this to full-time job, so we pay you $700,000 per year each. So I'm totally confused about this. Where is this money come from? Come from committee right now, so have only, I'm sorry, pure discriminatory because have only Bellevue minority. Seven thousand 50 percentage white people not represent about this, but this exactly people what is pay you this salary. You understand what I'm talking? So when you don't change these rules, you don't do in something like this in first place, in second place, I will go to court, because I cannot handle this for two time. Stand up, America. We need bring America back to normal.
Thank you. That is the end of our pre-registered list. We do have time for one additional speaker. I will remind everyone, before I call for additional speakers, we have reached the maximum on Airfield Park, both in support and opposition. So if there's anyone else joining us tonight that would like to speak on a different topic, please raise your hand. Mayor, I do not see any additional hands here or online. I'll turn it back to you. I'll turn it back to you.
All right, thank you. So next up, we have discussion of the city manager position, and we've gone through quite a process, ending tonight with an executive session where we discuss the qualifications. I wonder if, is Joy here? Can she speak to the process that we've been through before we take this up?
Hello, I'm Joyce Saint Germain, Human Resources Director. So the process that we went through is to first collected the job profile input from the city council, and we received input from the residents of Bellevue as well on the qualifications for the city manager, and also received input from the leadership team of the city. From there, there was deliberations with the council, and a decision was made to do interviews of acting city manager. So there was an interview of, with the city council and the city manager, and also two resident forums that were done. We did get input from the residents on the questions that they would like to ask of the city manager, and so those were completed as well. So that was the process in a nutshell that we went through to get input on the qualifications, and then there were interviews with the city manager, acting city manager Diane Carlson, and two resident forums that were completed last Thursday and this past Saturday as well, and received input from the residents on how they thought the interviews went and if they would recommend Diane Carlson as the city manager. So very positive feedback received, and those were compiled and provided to you.
Okay, thank you. So to go through the history of this, we did initially agree to do an outside search, and then we also agreed to create a profile, a professional profile for the job. And we hired a consultant, you hired a consultant, outside consultant, and they reported back to us on May 28th, and they gave us information on interviews that they had conducted with staff, with the business community, and with the fellow council members. And at that time, we decided to change the vote, and that was a five-two decision to make that change, and decided to instead change it to a local search on with Diane, inside search with Diane, or interview with acting city manager Diane Carlson, conducted by our inside staff, which I believe, Joy, you led.
Yes.
And so that had, process had a lot of input. There have been the interviews, the forums that you have talked about with the community. We've had interviews with the council, and in executive session, we did not decide how we were going to proceed, but we did decide we would now hold this discussion in public. So that's where we are right now. So I'm going to open this up to comments and discussion, if anybody has anything they'd like to say.
I can go first.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Joy, and thank you, Mayor, for a great summary. I think it's an amazing moment. I'm very happy to be part of this process. As you all know, selecting our city manager is one of the biggest tasks that this city can do, and we as a body can do. As Mayor mentioned, we explored various option, and the direction of this council was to evaluate our interim city manager against a very robust profile that was created by HR team and outside consultant gathering feedback from this body, residents, staff, and other stakeholders. Under this process, I have full confidence in our acting city manager. She has, she has demonstrated, and again, it wasn't just based on the interview. I had the privilege to work with her through, I don't know, nine months, eight months, ten months. She has demonstrated exceptional leadership and deep understanding of our community needs. She has a proven track record. When I was looking at her resume, I was in awe. I wish at some point I have half of that resume in my lifetime. Exceptional leadership, policy development skill, self-development, accountability, and I can go on more and more. I am confident that her balanced approach, attention to detail, and commitment to service all residents will help us achieve our city's goals and maintain our position as a regional leader. So Mayor, if you don't mind, can I make a motion, and then we can discuss further?
Yes.
I move to select Diane Carlson as the next city manager and direct the staff to begin negotiation and employment contract with her, to be brought back, along with an ordinance formally appointing Mrs. Carlson to the position of city manager for council consideration and action at the future meeting.
Okay, that opens this up for comments and discussion. There's a motion on the floor. Does anybody have any comments they would like to make? Councilmember Hamilton?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, and to you, Joy, for taking us through the process here. So we, as mentioned, we did initiate this process earlier in the year. In my mind, the process was designed to be a dynamic process. We created the job description. We created a candidate profile based on extensive feedback from council, staff, and community members. And while we didn't universally agree, the job description and candidate profile so strongly pointed us in the direction of our acting city manager that we decided to add the step of conducting an interview session with council and two community events as well. I participated, of course, in the council interview session, watched the other two. I think coming out of that, I'm more convinced than ever that we do have the right candidate. And I think we can't and we shouldn't ignore what we learn along the way. Process is important, but our process is designed to inform our decision. It is in place to move us forward and not hold us back. And when we have all the information we need, we need to make the decision. And it's not as if there are no risks in continuing the recruitment process for the position of city manager. So throughout this process, I have heard, not heard, one piece of negative feedback on Diane Carlson. Not one deficiency. A hundred percent of the feedback has been positive. And it's not just the preponderance of the evidence-type feedback, as in she meets standard. I've only gotten the beyond a reasonable doubt type of feedback, as in it's a no-brainer. So I could understand continuing in the process if there was an identified deficiency that we needed to correct for, but there's been no mention of one. And the folks, I believe that I'm here, and people voted for me, expecting me to make the right decision on our next city manager. And I've put in a lot of time and effort into understanding what Bellevue needs in a city manager. I've sought a lot of input and guidance, and I've watched Diane in action since she was appointed to the acting role. And I think the process has worked exactly as designed for the council to be in a position to hire its only employee. This is not just the end of a hiring process. I see this as the beginning of a new era in Bellevue. We have a lot of community alignment. We have a lot of momentum. I think Bellevue is firing on all cylinders, and that hiring Diane Carlson is a critical piece of our future success. I think it's a cause for celebration, and I'm ready to move forward in the process and to vote in favor of the motion that the deputy mayor just put forward, and hire Diane Carlson. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Stokes?
Yeah, I agree with my colleague on this. He well said, well put, and he's only worked with the city for six months. I've worked with the city as a council member since 2012, and have had the opportunity to work with a very outstanding city manager prior to this. And when he left, we started looking for a new person. Before that time, Diane Carlson was by the former city manager, who knows how, what city managers do and what we need, brought her in as a deputy city manager, and all of us had the privilege and the brilliant learning opportunity to see what Diane Carlson can do. And she's had a very different types of work that she's done. She's worked in with the county, she's worked with other organizations, and she has come in and really, really added to what we have in staffing and what we have in processing and the work that we're doing. And we're, I think, very, very lucky to have a person like Diane Carlson here, who is ready to take on a job that is not easy at all. And I have seen, just in the short time since she's been here, I think an increased working together of all the staff, working on getting stuff working together and good working relationships with the council and the public. I think we're very lucky to be able to have someone who could come here and start working with us right away. One of the things that we need is not to have, take a long time period and spend it on other things when we're, this is a time period right now, in the next year or two, when Bellevue has a lot of things going on, just like we were talking tonight. And we have the, I think, the real privilege to have an outstanding city manager, outstanding person to come and work with us. And the council has gone through, we've talked about it very back and forth, and decided that, you know, we should take this action because it is the best thing for us going forward. And so I'm very pleased to have, to vote for her and to work with her, and appreciate the work that our staff has done with us, and appreciate the work the mayor has done with us on this.
Okay.
So thank you.
Councilmember Noonhouse?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah. Well, first, I want to thank Joy and your HR team for leading us through this process. Also want to thank Claire Sumideraria for leading the interviews with the public. She did a fantastic job, and Councilmembers, I don't know, were watching it late night and seeing the public interaction and the questions from residents was a great, you know, a great process. So I really appreciate the outreach there. The rest of my comments, I'm going to separate into two different buckets. I'm going to talk about Diane Carlson, and I'm going to talk about the process, and they're very, very different things, and they shouldn't be conflated. I agree with everything that my colleagues have set up here. Diane, as if you watch the previous meetings and heard my comments, she's an outstanding candidate, and I, again, agree with everything that's been said about Diane, and especially appreciate her well-thought-out answers to our questions during our interview. But she's poised, accomplished, she's experienced, passionate, I think, very committed to the city of Bellevue, articulate. I think she will take a very balanced approach, and I believe, as she highlighted during the interview process, will be very innovative on behalf of the city of Bellevue, and as well as being very accountable, and accountable not only to us councilmembers, but the city as a whole, residents as a whole. And I think that came through very well during our interview process. And then, as been mentioned, being very influential in the relationships throughout the region. Certainly, that will benefit us as a city as we move forward. So she, again, outstanding candidate, and I look forward to voting for her as being our next city manager. Now, the process piece, and, you know, part of this probably comes from the fact that I'm an ex-professional athlete, and I always think that competition is a good thing. So I was one of those that wanted to see a national search, or at least a search, to compare and contrast to other candidates. I think that's a missed opportunity. That might just be a personal value, too, in terms of, I think it's always really important to hear from diverse set of candidates who have diverse opinions and diverse ideas and different thoughts about where we are as a city and where we need to go to, where we need to go and how we're going to get there. So I see that as a missed opportunity for the city, which I hope we can learn from, and maybe in the future, change this process a little bit. But again, I'm a hundred percent in favor of Diane Carlson. I think she's going to make an outstanding city manager, and I look forward to voting for her. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmembers on?
Yes, thank you. You know, I too appreciate the engagement. I think it was really important to have that broad input for the profile of what kind of qualities we're looking for, so that as we think about our acting city manager, we are really thoughtful about what's important to us and making sure that as we are holding up our acting city manager, that we are able to consider and evaluate how well she fits the qualities that we're looking for. So I really appreciate all of the engagement prior to the May 28th to get the profile in place. And I also thank Diane for actually wanting to step into this role, because it is very much a role that you're in a fishbowl, you're running a city that has, you know, a $2 billion buy-in-year budget, and then having to deal with the seven of us. And so, you know, that needs to also be said, that this is one of those roles that lots of people would shy away from because of some of that responsibility. So I really appreciate the fact that you were interested in stepping into that role. And I, as I have watched you work in the ten months in the interim, and then the years before you were in that role, I found you to be very steady, thoughtful, and responsive. So with that said, I think you would be an outstanding continual in that role as city manager. I didn't realize until I read your resume that you actually have only either worked in government or in a nonprofit with the Association of Washington Cities. And so to me, that more than thirty-five years where you're grounded in community and serving the community, I think that that is, that's going to really continue to serve Bellevue really well from the state, the county, the city level. For me, the piece that I thought was really important is that you bring all of the years of relationships and understanding the nuance of how to work with a broad range of people at different levels in government. And I also have this, have had the sense that you're very authentic. The person that you see here, I believe, is the same person that would be in front of the community, the businesses, the neighbors, the staff, and to me, that's really important. And then lastly, I think the fact that you live in Bellevue means that, you know, the actions that we take actually directly affect you and your family, and I think there's something to be said for that. You know, you're, when we talk about the fact that you're grounded in Bellevue and your love for Bellevue, it shows that you've been here many, many years. So I'm excited to work with you in the years to come and see Bellevue even better than we have been today. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Lee?
Thank you. I want to also separate the issue into two. One is, you know, the city manager, the other one is the hiring process. I really feel bad that we unfortunately are putting the process together and putting Ms. Carson in the middle of this untenable, unfortunate, difficult situation. We're not here to praise or bury Caesar. It's not. It's nothing to do with, you know, the quality of Diane Carson. She has She has proven to be a very good acting city manager. She has proven to be a very good staff for the city of Bellevue, as far as, you know, my experiences, as long as she's worked for the city. And I'm sure that, you know, we have a lot of kind of relationship between the colleagues over the years. And so this is not what's in question. What's in question is that how can we look for the future, to the future, not status quo? To the future, we have a vision. We don't know, you know, the vision can change. But at least we know we want to do some better. And divisions developed collaboratively by city council and by city manager. So to do that, we have to build that relationship, and we have to move forward. So it's not really static. So we have, some of us have voiced our opinion. We believe that we're looking for the best there is. And we don't know what's the best unless we try it, right? Look for it. And so that's why it's a national search, and it has other advantages. One is find out what's out there. Two, diversity, that's another thing. We've been talking about diversity for the last 18 years. And so why don't we look at other places where I'm sure, through diversity, we might find some difference? We might find that we already have diversity here. We don't know that until we make the comparison. Second is the opportunities. You know, well, opportunity is also in looking around, in telling people about us, in attracting people to look at Bellevue, in comparing us with other people. We may still stand out, you know, absolutely. Because Bellevue is unique, Bellevue's different. Bellevue is one of the best cities in the world. I'm not even saying in the nation. So I'm very proud of it. That's why I've been living here for all these years, and I will continue to live here. And so I, you know, so I'm looking for just the best. But that's all said, so I don't really want to belabor what's been done. We discussed that. And we have, we went through, we agreed to a process, and the process changed. It's all fine. It's a democratic process. We have to live by it. I mean, that's just the way we agree. It's good for the country, it's the system we live in, and it's the best, you know. Wise people have said, democracy is the messiest government is, but there's no other better. So we are, and that's why people will come to the United States. We want to live here, we want to, you know, make sure it continues. So I think it's, it's gone. So now we're looking at, the decision is in front of us. So I'm not even asking, you know, because it doesn't look like it's, it's going to open up the whole process again, you know, unless somebody surprisingly say, hey, you want to change, continue, open the process. But I'm not even going there. If that happens, well, that's good, we can continue. But let's just go with it is. And I think that, given what we, where we are, given that Diane is a wonderful city manager, not to mention, you know, the character, the person, individual, and I think she would do well for Bellevue. Bellevue would do well with Diane. And so, however, you know, I believe that we need to separate the two. So if we have an opportunity, that's fine, I'm happy. But I, without that, we're not addressing the question of Diane Carlson. So, make it short, I'm voting yes to hire Ms. Diane Carlson as the next city manager, in spite of my objection to and the unsuccessful vote against the recruiting process. So be clear, I am against recruiting process for the reason which I stated in previous city council meetings. Everybody knows, we are, we stated very clearly, and I think, you know, those people have heard it, have known it, it's on the record. And I also appreciate, on the same, the public that have, you know, shared the same opinion, you know, in the hiring process with us, because we need to acknowledge, you know, at least we heard them. So I am voting yes now to make sure that we are moving forward. And in the belief, I believe, in all our beliefs, I hope, that Diane will be a good city manager, which I'm confident she will be, and she will have my full support, and I wish her well. Thank you.
Okay, so I'll finish up here. And I wrote this out, and I apologize for reading it. But it's, this is a, the role of city manager is the most important hire that, most important job in city government, and it's the most important decision that we as a council make. It is our only hire and fire that council does. So we put a tremendous amount of thought into this decision. We could have done a national search, but as anyone who's done that knows, it's very hard to attract a viable candidate when the top pick is already in the position. And someone who knows our city as well as a resident, well, as a resident, as an employee, as a regional leader, as a deputy city manager, and now as acting city manager. In interviews conducted by our consultant and HR staff with the neighborhoods, the business community, the council members, the staff and community leaders, Diane Carlson was consistently the top choice. And a city that is growing as fast as Bellevue, that has as many possibilities and risks as we do, requires a city manager who can attract, hire, and retain excellent staff, oversee a large biennial budget that responds to the ever-changing needs of our community, and helps us prepare for future demands. And to be able to hire someone of Diane Carlson's caliber into a major leadership position with her historic knowledge and without having to have a transition period, without a period of adjustment, is just invaluable. We have a tremendous amount of work ahead of us. We have a 10-year comprehensive plan, followed by land use codes, the creating and passing of a biennial budget, the management of major projects already underway and on the horizon. I am grateful for the opportunity to hire Diane Carlson, an already-tested talent, who can hit the ground running and be working at full capacity tomorrow. And I think our city deserves that. And so, any more comments or questions? All right, with that, all those in favor of, I have to read the motion now. All those in favor of the motion to select Diane Carlson as the next city manager, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. All right.
Mayor, may I say a few words?
Yes, you may.
Very short. I just want to thank you all. As I said last week, I am very passionate about this city, and I take this job as just the highest level of responsibility to serve our community and to serve you and to further your vision for this city. And we have a lot of work ahead of us, as you noted. And in my true authentic self, I will say that the most exciting thing tonight is really the budget and the other things in front of you tonight. So I really appreciate what you have all said tonight and have given me your confidence in doing this position, in doing this job, and I look forward to it. So thank you.
Sorry, let's take a break till 8:10. Next up is the consent calendar. Do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, we have two study session items, and I will ask our city manager Diane Carlson to introduce them, please.
Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers. Tonight is a big night. We have been working on this for, actually, well over a year, to bring you the proposed 2025-2026 operating budget and six-year capital plan. And I will first thank our leadership team, many of whom are here tonight, and the staff, who put in many hours, many, many hours, to adapt our budget, to our preliminary budget, to the new financial policies that council adopted this year, and our processes. They're new, and we'll go through that this evening to kind of describe the changes in this budget. I want to thank the council for providing the vision and the direction for this budget. We heavily leaned on your priorities and your vision in terms of making decisions to, about what to bring forward in the preliminary budget. And I, lastly, want to thank the community for sharing over the year their interests, their values for our community as well. And that is a component of how we look at building this preliminary budget. In July, we brought you a financial forecast that was relatively stable or flat. And that's how, that's what we brought into this budget process. So we had flat revenues for '25 with slight growth in '26. That means that we did not have a lot of room to add new programs. But I'm happy to say that we have stabilized and are providing funding for ongoing services, so we had no reductions. And that includes adjustment, technical adjustments and inflation where appropriate. The preliminary budget also extends some of the council priorities that were put in place for this current budget. And I'm going to give a few examples. So the environmental stewardship staffing, the safe parking pilot program, public safety positions that were added last year, cross-cultural programming, affordable housing permit fee reduction, and extending the communities of color coordinating teams. So those are things that the council put in place last year that this budget will support extending. And then we also have some limited new investments with a focus on the council priorities. We are proposing an office of housing to support actions that will help us to achieve your affordable housing targets, move that process along. We are also proposing some additional funds for the human services grant programs. We'll go into more details about that. Fully supports the Human Services Commission's recommendations, but adds additional funding for youth programs. We are also proposing in our CIP, continuation of the Grand Connection design work. There also, in the CIP, is a proposed additional funding for safety and some bicycle investments. We have resources for land use code amendment work and permit assistance for small businesses. We also have some additional funds to standardize and enhance tools and practices for community engagement, something that's important, we think, throughout the organization. And then we also have, we are increasing proactive safety programs and planning efforts for our crisis and emergency management response, threat management coordination, and support for large events. So those are just some of the items in the budget. You're going to hear much, much more detail on all of those components. Not the detail tonight, the overview tonight, but the detail throughout the meetings over the course of this month and October. As I mentioned, this is a different budget. The, this budget adds transparency and a structure that will help us plan for the future to support services and investments to meet the vision of the council and the community. It follows the principles from the updated financial policies that you adopted, that transparency and a waterfall approach to using our revenues that allows more flexibility to apply those revenues to services and maintenance while making sure that we're keeping ongoing, one-time revenues appropriately aligned where they should be. And it's also organized by our strategic target areas. That is a different approach, and so that will be walked through tonight as well. The new financial policies support reserve funds for your priorities and growth. And any uses of those reserve funds would come to the council for approval. I do anticipate that we'll bring some proposals forward over the biennium to advance your priorities, to address growth. And those might include investments to provide a public benefit that also serves as a multiplier for that investment with private funds to support Kids Quest's expansion in Bellevue. Additionally, those funds could be used for land for affordable housing partnerships and future city facilities and development of affordable housing. This financial plan that you've all received as part of this budget, that's new as well this year. It's the first time that the city has produced a concise plan that goes out for six years. And you can clearly see our estimated revenues and expenses. It's a guide for us to follow, gives a longer-term view, and really helps us plan for the future and adjust as the conditions change. Lastly, a highlight for our capital program, which is new this year and will be something that we look at in 2025. Investments in capital are very important for us as a community to ensure that we are supporting the growth that comes. And we do plan on taking a deep look at our capital programs in 2025 so that we can remain accountable for how we grow and how we invest. That deep look will look at how we plan for capital and how we deliver capital. And also will incorporate looking at how we align our capital needs to the growth that's coming, that's been identified in our future comprehensive plan. That will bring us to a place where we need to evaluate what are our investment needs and what are those revenues that we have to support those. And that's going to be a conversation that we plan on bringing back to you in 2025 as well. So I'm very pleased to be starting this process with the council now. It does hold to the city's strong practice of considered spending while making modest investments in your priorities and moving some of those forward. I look forward to the community process to receive their input on this, and then also with working with the council to reach your final budget that you will consider in November. And with that, I will turn this over to John Riesha, City's Chief Financial Officer, and Evan Phillips, our Financial Strategy and Performance Director. And they will give you an overview of the proposed budget this evening. John?
Thank you, Ms. Carlson. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, councilmembers. Tonight is one of my more exciting nights of any time, which is the wonderful time to support our city manager in presentation of budget for your consideration. Tonight, we're going to jump in. It is information-only, and we're going to go through a few key areas to help orient you to what you're going to be looking at and prepare for the next seven conversations that we'll have between now and before Thanksgiving. We'll go through tonight the calendar and adoption legislation. We'll talk a little bit about the public involvement to get to this place. We want to pause for a moment on budget equity and budget equity toolkit, which was new this year, following your direction from last year. We'll spend some time in the overview of general fund resources, and then get into a very high-level budget overview, though your city manager has provided quite a good overview of the new things that you will find within the budget. Very quickly, the council budget. We are tonight at our preliminary budget presentation, transmittal and presentation. You have already had your first public hearing back on July 9th. Next week will be your second public hearing. And it will also be the night that we'll talk about resources, our taxes, fees, and the like. So we'll have Development Services and Utilities joining us for a discussion of that and our fund structures. October is our time for learning and your time for deliberation. We will spend three meetings in October talking about the strategic target areas more in-depth. And then we will roll into your further deliberations. November 12th is targeted for, is the final public hearing. And we have a tentative adoption date of the 19th, which also gives us additional time, should you need more time in your deliberations.
So with that being said, speaking about the adoption night, so as an opportunity, I know this is a first budget process for a few member, few councilmembers on the dais. And I wanted to lay out and to level set, these are the adoption ordinances and resolutions that come forth on that tentative adoption night of November 19th. So within all these, they're grouped into the areas color-coded on the slide before you. So the first is, there are five ordinances that are tied to the fees and rates that we'll be discussing next week on the 24th. That is part of the research. next week on the 24th. That is part of the resources night. These are the Development Services fee ordinance, as well as an ordinance for each one of utilities, the utilities department's utilities. We also, there is a new item that is a one-off item that is tied to the policy conversation that we've been having with council over the last several months, and this is the Water Works financial policy that will be sunset via ordinance. As we've discussed in the past, especially on July 9 at previous discussions, the Water Works policy, financial policies have run concurrently with the city's financial policies, and through our conversations and direction from council, we are now bringing those two policies together into the comprehensive citywide financial policies. So, since that, those Water Works policies were adopted by ordinance, it is appropriate for us to sunset those via ordinance and close that out before the end of the year. So, that is more kind of a cleanup, but that is a one-time item. That is not a routine thing. We also have ordinances, resolutions tied to the boards and commissions work, specifically Human Services Commission adopting their recommendations. We have two property tax. We have one that is a resolution that preserves our banked capacity, and then it is followed by a property tax levy ordinance. This is for adopting the property tax levy, and that has to be done by November 30 to meet a King County deadline. So, that is the time-sensitive element here, along with the umbrella ordinance, which includes the budget detail for the two years of the biennium. That includes the first two years of the capital improvement program, and it also includes a host of other attachments, grants and donations below $350,000, and a bunch of other sundry items that we will go over as we get closer to that date. But these largely are the legislation that goes forward on adoption night. So, one of the main things that we are talking about here in terms of baselining, and that's going to be a big part of our conversation tonight, is public involvement. So, the public hearing, as John mentioned, the first public hearing was the last time John and I were before you on July 9, and we had 26 communications, of which 22 were in this room virtually or in person, and four written communications. Those largely covered a few main topics, including nonprofit funding, specifically Kids Quest. Bike and pedestrian safety was a very large topic, as well as action on climate change and public safety. Our second public hearing is next Tuesday, when we will all be before you, and then there is a final public hearing the week before the adoption on November 12. I do also want to point out that while there are three official public hearing dates, we do have other communication channels, and the public is always welcome to communicate via email or via phone mail as well. The door is always open for communication, and we understand that not everyone has the time or capacity to make it here on a Tuesday night, so we want to make sure it's an equitable process for receiving feedback. We have also included community surveys. So, over every biennium, we run three community surveys tied to this area. Of course, we run many other community engagement efforts that survey the population, but we focus on the business survey, the performance survey, and the budget survey. And as you can see on the numbers, we have several hundred people per survey, and across the three surveys in this last biennium, we have about 3,300 people, 3,337 completed responses for those surveys. We have a large representative sample of the population to understand their feelings about the business environment, the performance of city services, as well as their budget priorities. And that's how this is, this slide shows where those priorities shook out. There is a, you know, it's relatively close race across all these priorities because all of these priorities are important. These priorities loosely tie to the strategic target areas, and as you can see, there's only a couple of percentage points between them. The one that has the largest amount at the very bottom of your screen, as it goes from lowest to highest, is resilient and secure place where all people feel safe, valued, and welcome. And all of these, again, tie very closely to their STAs. Again, everything here is important, which is part of why we seek so much input, is to try to get those nuances and figure out what is the best way to approach all of these really important issues, and how do we provide the most with the fewest amount of resources.
So, one of the interesting new components of the budget, while each of you has before you or available to you a physical budget book, our main budget book this year is an electronic budget book. It is available at bellevewa.gov/budget, and you can click down and select the '25-'26 preliminary budget and be able to interact with the finances, with the proposals, with the different kinds of revenue, and drill into, all the way down to which individual proposals have been provided by department and by strategic target area. It is a new resource, and as a result, we're also having some additional information sessions with the public to help them with interacting with this new budget tool. So, in the coming week, we'll actually be hosting, we'll be hosting three different sessions next Monday evening at Crossroads Tuesday afternoon before the public hearing, and then Thursday evening out at South Bellevue Community Center. So, we've got great opportunities there, and we will be engaging with other organizations throughout the process to help them understand what's in it so that they can provide their feedback and input to you as you go through your learning and process and ask questions throughout October.
And one thing I would like to quickly mention there is at bellevewa.gov/budget or slash budget, there is a bevy of other information there as well. We also have, for the first time, a capital improvement program plan explorer, so you can see programs that are happening or projects happening in your neighborhood and click down and drill down. This is a first effort, so there will probably be some technical hiccups around, along the way, but this is all in the effort of transparency. So, this is a big leap forward for us.
Joining us tonight is Dr. Whitehead and Sarah Boils, who are just going to give you a very quick overview of our budget equity toolkit, which is new this year. As I change microphones, one of the things that you will find within the budget book is actually summaries of the work that each of the department did to inventory and understand what it is doing to ensure that all people of Bellevue have access to government. And with that, Dr. Whitehead.
Thank you. We're very excited to share with you tonight our budget equity toolkit. The excitement is that we actually completed it, and this, of course, was as a request of council in 2022 that the preparation of the 2023-24 budget would, we would develop a tool for assessing and understanding the equity impact of the city's budget. In 2022-23, the diversity advantage team and the budget office worked together closely to research best practice and budgeting and equity, looking at both local and national examples. Following this research, staff developed a prototype of the budgeting for equity toolkit. Fall 2023, staff conducted a beta test of the toolkit across several internal and external departments. Following this testing, staff made updates and changes to the budget equity tool. Spring of 2024, staff received in-depth training on the use of the budget equity tool, and each department submitted a completed budgeting for equity toolkit alongside their other required budget materials. Just a tad backwards, because now what we want to do is define for you what is the budget equity tool. And with that, I will pass it over to Sarah Boyle.
Thank you, Dr. Whitehead. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members. So, I'll just briefly speak to what the budget equity toolkit turned into, coming from the original direction from all of you in 2022, and how it was applied to this budget cycle and the results of that application. So, the BET, as we like to call it, has the goal of helping the city understand how our use of resources benefits or burdens historically marginalized communities within Bellevue. And that term historically marginalized communities, we have adopted to include communities of color, people with disabilities, the LGBTQIA2S+ plus community, low-income populations, people experiencing homelessness, speakers of other languages, and immigrants and refugees. This is inclusive of all who may not have historically been benefiting or maybe have even been actively harmed by the services and resources of the city government. In addition to helping us understand our impacts, the BET also provides a shared and consistent framework and process for the city to really align its spending to our stated DEI core value and our citywide DEI goals. At the heart of the budget equity toolkit is a set of 14 equity impact questions, which were developed using research of best practices both locally and across the nation. And these impact questions were applied to departmental budgets and were meant to help guide departments in understanding how their budget connects back to these DEI values and DEI goals. The questions focus on things like how staff are using data and community engagement to inform our budget allocations, being able to identify and communicate impacts of department services on historically marginalized communities, and plans for addressing any inequities, disparities departments identify. So, through this process and completing the budget equity toolkits, we were able to learn a lot of really helpful insights on how our budget connects back to our DEI goals. First and foremost, we're really happy to report that across all departments, we were able to demonstrate both previous and forward-looking investments that move us forward on our DEIB journey across the city. Some of these are new city manager Diane Carlson mentioned earlier, but include things such as human services funding, investments in affordable housing, ADA compliance in our built environment, investments in technology to further language access, affordable Wi-Fi, and transparency in our policing. These BET responses did highlight a few opportunities for further investment in the city, such as more consistent and proactive community engagement practices across all of our projects, the use and analysis of disaggregated data, so we can better understand how our services may be impacting different communities differently, and also more DEI training and education for all staff so that we build capacity across the organization to further this work. For this particular budget cycle, one challenge we did encounter was actually being able to track city spending across the diversity advantage plan goals. As we're all aware, that is an aging plan, and we are in the process of updating it, and as those goals evolve and transform, we know that for the '27-'28 budget, we will more accurately be able to track spending directly back to these diversity advantage plan goals. And with that, I will pass it back to John and Evan. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So, thank you. We're going to be moving into general fund resources, and something I just want to mention at the beginning is resources often get conflated with revenues, and resources are, they do include revenues, they also include some beginning cash as well. So, it isn't just the revenue coming in the door. It's all the resources, all the funding, whether it's be cash or incoming revenues, whether that be taxes or charges for services, but it is more than strictly the revenue that's coming in on any particular year or biennium. This slide should look familiar. This is the slide that John and I presented on July 9 during our financial forecast update, specifically as it relates to taxes. Some of the highlights, just really quickly to bring everybody up to the same level, is there is a, as you can see visually, a very volatile period during COVID, as one might expect with the economy turning on and off, with fiscal tightening in certain spaces, whether that be government spending, but also the reaction to inflation and increased interest rates. There have been a lot of pushing and pulling across the economy, and that's what you're seeing in those numbers there. Our discussion included the volatility of some of those revenues, which actually, if you look from left to right with the line with the circle, your property taxes is your most stable, and on the far right of your screen with the green and the square, your real estate excise taxes, that is your most volatile, and has swung greater than 40%, 50% in any given year. So, that's very volatile, whereas property taxes, because of the structures of Washington State, usually only grow by new construction plus 1%. And that's at council's prerogative. So, there is a lot of volatility during this COVID period, again, because of the economic push and pull. But what we're seeing here in 2024 and beyond is much more normalization. These are more historical growth rates that Bellevue has been accustomed to. We are still a very attractive place to invest time and energy and funding, and we're a regional destination and economic engine. So, those core economic factors are really sustaining Bellevue during that push and pull period. Going forward, we are curious to see what, I believe the Fed is wrapping up tomorrow in terms of interest rates, so we will be watching that very closely tomorrow morning, hoping for a larger basis point cut. But that is part of our story, our economic story just generally is the cooling of construction and development. We have been, we've had a very robust development pipeline that has carried us through some of this fiscal tightening, but the pipeline cannot last forever, and we're starting to see some of that play out in our revenues. So, we hope to see development come back online in a more robust way, but in the projections you see in front of you, we still are expecting more moderated growth. And the exceptions there, you'll see in 2028, sorry, excuse me, 2029, you see the 2008 parks levy expire, and then in 2032, the next parks levy expires. So, that's where you're seeing those drops in revenue, those little blips. In 2032, that's about a 27% drop. And again, this is very similar to a chart we showed on July 9, but this is for the preliminary '25-'26 biennium. So, this is showing our beginning fund balance nearing about $1 billion. And our taxes, again, this was the conversation we had on July 9, this is about 27% of our total resource pie, a much larger share of our revenue pie, but we have a number of volatile revenue sources that make up that 27%, namely, sales tax and BNO taxes, but of course, and REIT. But we do have substantial property taxes, and as you can see from the remainder of the pie, a pretty diverse revenue, set of revenue streams that sustain the city, whether that's intergovernmental funding through grants and other direct sources, or licenses, permits, utility rates and fees, et cetera. But generally speaking, we are in a very robust position, but still, a lot of what you're seeing on your screen is not ongoing funding streams. These are one-time dollars. All of the beginning fund balance you're seeing is one-time cash. That's not a revenue stream, whereas your taxes, your utility rates and fees, those are paying for those ongoing services in our general funds, but also our enterprise utilities as well. So, while there is a lot of money on the screen for the biennium, $1.64 billion, a lot of that is one-time money. So, it's really important to keep that in context as we're going forward in our conversations over the next six, seven meetings. And now, I will hand it back to John.
Thank you. It is important, as we start this process, to talk a little bit about how things are different. You remember, and council members on, I heard you reference the $2.2 billion budget of the last budget cycle. This budget cycle will be bringing forward a $1.75 billion appropriation. Why is it so different? It's not because we have a significant major dip in revenues. We have historically, as a city, appropriated all cash, and we have accounted for full-cost recovery and had interdepartmental charges that weren't necessary from an accounting standpoint. And so, we've got a way to, that we've worked with our accounting and really are following all of the best practices so that we can be clear about what you are appropriating of spending. Now, in the financial plan, you will also see some very interesting things. When you look at the financial plan, the bottom quarter of the financial plan is all about reserves. As city manager Carlson mentioned, we are not going to be proposing to adopt or ask you to appropriate those reserves. Those are monies that are set aside, and should they need to be accessed, that would be a request of you, the council, at a later time. But we want to be clear with the public about what those dollars are for, both in the general purpose as well as in our enterprise or utility purpose. And all of those dollars make up significant commitments that have been made and are provided from different types of funding sources that have uses associated with them. As small as it may seem, something as small of our unemployment compensation reserve, very critical. We've always had it. It's been historically inside of a department. Now, it's visible for the public to understand what those few million dollars are set aside for and making it visible. In the process of all of this work, one of the other differences that will be In the process of all of this work, one of the other differences that will be quite glaring and quite obvious is it will look like the department budgets have decreased, when in fact, they haven't. When we remove some of that historical charges out of that and get down to the core of what they are spending, it really lines up and gives a true new baseline for our departments of that spending. And so this process will allow you and the public to track the city as a whole, rather than just tracking pieces of it. We are looking at it from the department standpoint, we're looking at it from the fund standpoint. We're ensuring that all of those things line up, and we're doing it very much consistent with state law and with advice and guidance through this from State Auditor's Office, who actually dictates the accounting profile. So we've done a lot of work to prepare ourselves and provide you with a new level of transparency and visibility. And just to make note, we are starting tonight the Memory Bank. For those of you who have not experienced the Memory Bank, that is a process where we will receive questions throughout the process, we will document those questions, and then we will make sure we're getting responses back to you and share those again and again at each of the meetings. So as we get into the budget, what we're looking at is the general fund for the biennium represents about $792 million. Our enterprise or utility funds, both operating and capital, represent just shy of $500 million. Our general capital and our equipment rental replacement, that is, again, the account that we use to plan for replacement of vehicles and major software systems and equipment that needs to be replaced over time, and so we build up those funds so we have a regular rolling cycle, represents about $300 million, with the largest portion being our capital program. Some of our other funds total up to be just shy of $100 million, include things like special grants and different kinds of restricted funds. And then, of course, it is always important, particularly given the investment waterfall that has been included in your policies, is that we identify debt as our first payment. And right now, our debt service, including the new TFIA loans, will be running about $60 million for the biennium.
All right. So, as a refresher for those who are newer to the budgeting in Bellevue, one of the things we do is, as we're developing the budget and we're taking in all that feedback, whether it's public hearings or written correspondence or survey feedback, it's all tied back to the strategic target areas that you all have revised here in the last twelve months. And for those of you who may not be initiated in this, there are the six that are on your screen in front of you that is high-performance government, so that covers most of the administrative functions of the city, all of our administrative staff. This historically, if you're comparing biennium to biennium, used to include public safety, so your fire, emergency management, and police services. Those are now broken out into our safe, excuse me, our community and safety and health, STA, our strategic target area. So high-performance government really is on the functioning of the city, those core capacities, whether it's legal, folks like finance, myself, HR, et cetera, as well as our city manager and other administrative staff. Our vibrant economy is very straightforward, it is, well, making our economy vibrant. It is relatively the smallest portion of our STA, but know that the dollars appropriated are not a sign of its value. Obviously, this is what is driving a lot of the effort within the city and really creating a really vibrant and robust economy. Our safe and efficient transportation system, this is almost exclusively our folks in the Transportation Department, covering the entire transportation system. High-quality built and natural environment, this includes everything from affordable housing to parks. And our, and development services is really about building that environment. And those, those types of services are tied to that particular STA. Community safety and health is our public safety, so we have fire, our emergency management, and law enforcement in community safety and health, but we also have utilities. And for some folks, that may not be a natural place for that to land, but when it comes to safety, there's nothing more important sometimes than clean water. So really making sure that that public health element of what our utilities provides is part of community safety and health. So those two things are perhaps more related than they may seem on first blush. And then we really also have another one that's thriving people and communities. So as it says, Bellevue is a caring community, and this is where a lot of our human services funding goes. This is really where people are, we're setting up the government services to enable people to really thrive within our community, whether that's affordability, social services, and other related programs. And just to show you a cut, this is expenditures by STA, I do want to caveat, this is operating expenditure, so this does not include our capital improvement program, our CIP, but from a biennium operating perspective, you could see the rough distribution of our preliminary spending that's included before you tonight. So our community safety and health represents about four, about half of our expenditure. Again, a large part of that is our police, fire, and utilities. Those are some very large initiatives, very large services, and they're well represented within our expenditures. High-performance government is about a quarter, and that is, again, all of the support to provide services for a lot of the external-facing functions of the city, whether that's parks, transportation, what have you. Again, those are your folks in finance, IT, HR, City Manager's Office, et cetera. Our high-quality built and natural environment, some may think that this is relatively small. Same with safe and efficient transportation, that these are relatively small portions of the pie, considering what people think government does. Again, some of that is a function of this being operating as opposed to capital. Both of these areas, so safe and efficient transportation has, obviously, the Transportation Department, and high-quality built and natural environment has our parks and community services Department, largely the parks functions of that department. And those are largely capital-intensive enterprises as well as operating, so payment for large roadway projects, large bike ped, as well as parks, pieces especially tied to our existing two parks levies, those are not represented here. So it's a really important context that we are talking specifically about our operating expenditures here, and those relative shares are a little bit different when you're looking at operating as compared to capital or both of them combined. Again, as I said, it's not a representative of its importance, but vibrant economy is actually three percent of our budget. That is about a fraction of a percent, or one percent higher than normal, it usually floats somewhere between one and a half and two and a half percent. So this gets us closer to the three percent number. And again, thriving people and communities, it represents eight percent, and largely, those are tied to our human services functions in some way, shape, or form.
Next, I will touch on a few highlights, but as we go deeper in in October, we'll spend a lot of time on each of our strategic target areas. And if you're looking in the electronic budget book, clicking into Chapter Four, you can actually click into each of these strategic target areas and see all of the proposals and investments that are within it. Some key areas that have been highlighted for high-performance government, things like we're proposing improving municipal planning for our long-range services and facility needs, and adding a small amount of staffing to build out the data analytics program and accountability for the city. We're also proposing to extend some of the ESI staffing and support for the municipal side of our stewardship goals, including some efforts around lead and clean fuels, and as we'll get to capital, some of the work that's going on to electrify our facilities. It also does include a municipal innovation advisory committee and some funding to support that in partnership with our technology group, so that we, as a city, continue to innovate and capitalize on the community that we happen to be within, which has a very rich technology basis. Our vibrant economy has programs focused on workforce development, entrepreneurship. Key to this budget proposal in this cycle, the City Manager has asked this organization to focus in on small and mid-sized businesses in this next cycle. And so the investments are focused in those key areas while helping support some of our larger as well. It also includes some permitting support and special event-type activation support as we continue to grow their need to interact with business, with government. And it also does provide funds and planning for public art. In safe and efficient transportation, while it is very capital-focused, we have begun to address some of the funding gaps in maintenance and began, and provided some additional investment in those spaces. And it does get into investing in Vision Zero and the technologies to help enhance the safety side and collision deterrence. We'll talk a little more in capital as we get into those spaces, but it does also get us to complete our major projects that are underway and then get into more human-scale neighborhood, safety-oriented, and bike facility, bike and pedestrian facilities. In the high-quality and built environment, City Manager Carlson spoke to something that is a very important endeavor in this process, which is the creation of an office of housing and some support to do, bring in some consulting to get that, what that looks like and get it established. It also does continue to provide support for our housing and homelessness, which we'll get into another section, but in this particular, in high-quality and built environment, it adds to the fee offsets for affordable housing. So if you remember, you, this last cycle, invested in covering some of those costs for those permits, this would continue that and bring those fees back, provide more funding for it. It does invest in predictable and timely permit review services, more than just in response to $52.90 from the state, but really to continue our commitment to do a great job. It does provide the staffing for parks, planning and maintenance, and capital delivery associated with the 2022 levy that is now in place, and getting those staffing in to do the work is an important piece. And it does continue the staffing for our policy priorities of keep Bellevue beautiful and our environmental stewardship initiative with our public-facing side as well. In community and safety, safety and health, some of the key things that add in terms of enhancements are really around emergency preparedness, about larger-scale events, including establishing a dedicated police captain for managing large events. It is a sign of our time. And as a result, we've also provided a small amount of funding to ensure that here at City Hall, we've got staffing teams that are skilled and trained in threat management to be able to work in partnership with our police department. It does provide, excuse me, some funding and for the establishment of community court, and adds funding for opioid and disorder, opioid disorder crisis response, excuse me. And lastly, which is very important here, it also provides resources and staffing to support, provide for domestic violence advocacy. And in thriving people and communities, it does bring the human services funding back to what our historic levels as the federal and ARPA funds have receded. Unfortunately, that, that receding has left some gaps in that funding, and while we're able to fund at our historic levels that grow a bit over time, we have been able to identify an additional $1.25 million a year in this budget to add into those human services, and it is proposed with emphasis to make sure that we've got some support for our youth. It does provide continuation of homelessness prevention outreach and safe parking programs, and does provide another year of cross-cultural center without walls grants. Moving to the CIP.
Okay. Again, and as we will be going through the STA conversations over the next several meetings, we will dig into the capital improvement program pretty significantly, but we do want to provide a high-level overview today. So you could see just by the, what we're calling them, the capital portfolios, we have fire, municipal, just to define that, I think categorizing that this way is a little bit new for us. That includes some community development, capital projects, this includes information technology programs, and I'll go into some of these investments in a second, but also some of our major maintenance tied to our municipal facilities, including the building that we're sitting in right now. Parks, a lot, and transportation, a lot of that is driven by their levy funding and those particular needs and commitments that have been identified. And utilities is tied to their ongoing replacement program, their ongoing maintenance of their pretty robust infrastructure across water, sewer, et cetera. So that is the rough order over the course of the six-year CIP. And again, we'll go into much more detail over those meetings that are tied to each of these STAs and portfolios. But I do want to provide a few highlights. Within the fire portfolio, we are looking forward to a Fire Station 10 completion here in the next little bit, and we're all very much looking forward to having a fire station serving the downtown community and surrounding areas. There are some liabilities at some of our existing fire station in terms of some fuel tanks that need to be replaced. This is something that is a high-priority item for the city, and not necessarily the most fun thing to spend money on, but really essential to the safety of those sites. We also are planning in long term for Fire Station Five construction in 2027 and beyond as it relates to the municipal portfolio. While we started occupying this building as a city in 2005, 2006, this building was built, I believe, in 1988 or 1987, so we're, we've occupied this building for nearly twenty years, but it's a, we're about forty years in, and about half of this building's lifetime, so half of its half-life, or it's, we're at its half-life at this point, which means we need to upgrade some of our major systems and some major maintenance and repair to this building. And part of the biennium, we'll be figuring out what the scope of that project will look like. So like a lot of other sections of our CIP, we are focusing on planning and analysis over the next two years to come back to you all with more substantial analysis for subsequent recommendations in '27 and '28. Also, we are replacing and enhancing some citywide systems as part of our business transformation efforts, and that includes, within the CIP, our, replacing our ERP system, our Enterprise Resource Planning System, which is JD Edwards. Parks, some notable things tied to our levies, Maidenbauer Bay Phase Two design work will be initiated. We are also planning on doing substantial design work for the Parks Resource and Management Facility with a hopeful construction date of Q4 of the end of the biennium in 2026. Transportation, we do hope to fill in some gaps within the transportation network for bike, pedestrian, non-motor, and motorized users. And as City Manager Carlson mentioned, we are continuing the design work on the non-motorized 405 crossing, which is part of the broader Grand Connection programming. As I mentioned, just to wrap things up here in CIP, utilities is working on ongoing maintenance and replacing of aging infrastructure, as well as capacity building to meet future growth, as I'm sure this council is aware of as being part of the comp, comp plan discussions over the last year or so. So the capacity growth is substantial, utilities is trying to meet that need.
And as we wrap this up, we've got a number of meetings coming up. We've provided you with the key topics that we'll be discussing on each night, and so we'll have an opportunity on the 24th, again, public hearing plus a focus on revenues and reserves, including development services rates and utility rates. On October 8th, we'll be talking safe and efficient transportation and community safety and health. On the 15th, high-quality built and natural environment and vibrant economy. On the 22nd, high-performance government, thriving people and communities. And the 29th will be council Q and A time and follow-up from the Memory Bank, anything else that's left outstanding, giving you time for deliberations as we move into November and moving into the adoption timeframe. So those are our upcoming meetings and topics that we have before us. Again, there are seven meetings that are scheduled at this point to get us to that potential adoption date. And this is for information only tonight, and we'll move into the rest of it as we move forward in this process, and thank you for that opportunity.
Terrific. Thank you for the great presentation. I'm going to ask council, if we can, and staff also, if we submit questions or comments to staff, if you can make it, your answers available to all the council, because we have two major items ahead of items ahead of us tonight, and this is information only, so I'd like us to be able to ask questions, but we can do it to staff directly through email or in person and share all the answers. Are you okay with that? I'm seeing Councilmember Nguyen House shake his head.
Well, this is a really important topic. Unfortunately, the presentation was only supposed to be 20 minutes, but it was 50 minutes. And now we've only, we have two other study sessions, but this is a really important discussion, and it's just unfortunate that we have to cut something if we're going to get out of here at a reasonable time. But we have two other important topics in terms of the neighborhood planning as well as the airfield discussion.
Which take action and direction. This is information only, but we can, I don't know. You know, one comment I will make is this book is not paginated. This is going to be really hard to reference anything.
Yes, and that's something that we hope to rectify here shortly. We ran into some technical issues as we were hitting print this afternoon. So trust me, that was something we, we really did try to rectify here at the last minute, but Adobe was not cooperating with us, unfortunately.
Okay, so we will get new booklets, I assume?
Yes.
Okay.
We will get you a paginated version. And I would also recommend folks to do explore the digital version. The platform that we're using is really digital first, and it allows for a lot of flexibility, but we obviously understand that paper is still, that tactile experience is really rewarding for people, and we want to make sure it's still useful, too.
Okay, thank you. So can I get a head nod if we are okay to move on and submit questions and comments via email? I see one, Councilmember Hamilton, Councilmember Lee. No response. You're okay?
I'd love to understand timing. So if we're gonna not comment here?
If we're, well, if we're gonna open it up, we can, we can open it up.
No, I want to ask a question about if we're gonna give you comments, by when? And does that mean that before the public hearing next week, we will actually have that attachment as a list so that we know what each other has asked? I think that that's not too much to expect before we agree to this approach.
Mm-hmm. Is that feasible?
It's very much feasible and consistent with our memory bank process to ensure that that is available and visible to you. And historically, that has been even provided as an attachment each time that the budget comes before you. And so you will have a full copy of that every time with the updates, and we will have that available.
Yes, and I do think, just in particular as it relates to this subsequent Tuesday, we would be able to share the information with you, but I don't know that we would be able to make publication date because we don't have the time, or you all don't have the time to write your questions here before we may realistically receive your feedback as well as provide answers here in the next 24, 36 hours. So I just want to throw that out there as a caveat, that it may be hard to turn those around, and it expects you all to, as council, to provide your questions sooner rather than later, so that may be an aggressive timeline.
Councilmember Zion asked for a deadline, so.
So can I just clarify?
Go ahead.
I just want to make sure that before the, by the public hearing, we actually see each other's questions. I'm not saying that I need the answer, but I think it would be, what I have appreciated is that when we're able to do that and then just augment with sending you additional questions, we are not asking the same of, if we already know it's on the table, we don't have to ourselves go, oh, here's five more questions. So let me just be clear about that. I'm not asking the deadline for you to respond, just the timeline for when you want questions from us so it can be part of the packet.
If we could receive those questions, the first round of questions for, so we can make the packet, would need to be in by early Thursday or late Wednesday?
Yes, preferably late Wednesday, just so we make sure, especially if there's any clarity, we need to, if we need clarification on your question, that gives us a little bit of time to triage and make sure that we fully understand your question. Even if we aren't answering it, we want to make sure that we still provide the context around your question, so we aren't getting wires crossed when we provide that information.
Is that tomorrow?
Correct. Forward the packet publication, and that's the.
Okay, I'm going to rescind my recommendation and open this up for questions and discussion. Does anybody have a question or a discussion item?
I do. Or are you just gonna call on us?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Well, first of all, I really appreciate this format. I think it is really helpful to understand the different strategic target areas. So just in the interest of time, I'm not going to comment on the things that are already in there, although I do have to say, seeing community court for the first time in seven years, I'm like, woo! Super excited about that. I just wanted to understand, the one that talks about the permitting support for small business, special events, is that actually to streamline permitting? Because I think there's a difference between support for permitting and really kind of streamlining so that special events can move much more expeditiously. So that's actually one of my questions, I wanted to understand. Funds and plans for public art, I'm on page 21. Just wanted to understand, so public art can be part of the arts budget as well as for some government agencies, they allocate a certain component of the budget within the CIP projects that are publicly facing that has public art. So wanted to understand when we say that, if that may be one of the things that we would consider. And then on the, on the cross-cultural center, so I'm now on page 23, resource site selection analysis, so does, is that only the site selection, or might that also include some funds for some preliminary design of the cross-cultural center? I know that's been one that we've had on our minds for quite some time. So that was one of the other questions that I had. And the one related to supporting economic development for small and mid-sized businesses, are we confident that there will be enough resources in there for both small and mid-sized, or should we be focused on the small businesses first before we expand to mid-size? And lastly, I'm really excited about the capital improvement program and streamlining delivery, so I would like to understand whether, as you look at the CIP, how you're considering educating staff on some alternative delivery methodologies so that as we move forward with whether it's Fire Station 5 or other capital investment programs to maximize the investments? So I will stop for now.
And so we can take those answers later. We don't need to, I think, sit here and listen.
Right, yeah, just wanted to get those questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Nguyen House.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I'll try and whip through comments and questions that we can add to the memory bank. So thank you for the great presentation, a lot of great information there, and thank you especially for spending some time about how it's going to be a little bit different this time around, having gone through it a number of times earlier. First, I'll touch on public safety. So this is something that I brought up before, but last budget cycling period, we funded a second battalion of the fire department by about 80%, maybe 83 if I remember correctly. Is it within this budget, because I can't get through here because it's not paginated, but is it within the budget right now that we're going to make that battalion whole by funding the remainder? If not, I'd like to see that happen. My understanding is that we were going to have, for police, we were going to increase the signing bonus for laterals. Is that in this budget? Okay, you can answer later, I guess. And if not, I'd like to know why, as well as a retention bonus for police officers as well as we lose officers to other municipalities. Regarding the arts, and this is something that I've spoken to Councilmember Stokes quite a bit about increasing that funding, it feels like it's flat, that funding, at a time when we are on the cusp of losing two of our most iconic arts institutions here in the city. I believe the request, which I wholeheartedly agree with and support in order to address some of kids' quest, ask of the city, but would like to get some more detail on that. I think that's really important. As much as it is creating the new bell-red arts district, we got to retain what we have as well when it comes to the arts. Really want to see an increase in our Vision Zero funding. I think that's critically important, and I appreciate the fact that you've made a mention of that here. A new item for me that I thought about, especially in regards to our last presentation, or sorry, our last meeting, is about PSE and electricity into our city. I would like to insert into this budget that we have a third party do a reliability study currently and then into the future based on a model of how this city is going to grow and where that density is going. I think that's critically important, especially from an economic development standpoint as we have more and more businesses coming into here, as well as the, what, the 30,000 residents, et cetera. Grand Connection, great, I'm glad we spent time for that. Human services, yeah, much needed in terms of increasing that. Public engagement, thank you, City Manager, for putting that in there. That's a big one for me and for others here as well. The Office of Housing, I've got concerns on this. I would rather put any money creating what I feel might be another layer of bureaucracy. I'd much rather just hire a head count to deal with that affordable housing permits versus creating a whole new office. And I'm not quite sure I see the wisdom in that. Plus, any additional funds that we would have from that, I'd much rather put that into streamlining our permit process, and not just for affordable housing, but just for housing in general. The faster we can get those out, the faster we're creating residential and commercial space in our city. A couple, few more items here. So the arts here, on the, oh yeah, on the DEI, which is very important, and I'm glad we're looking at this through a DEI lens. But one thing that you mentioned that I wasn't clear on is, because I know we have a number of policies and dashboards already about transparency in policing, but you mentioned that again as part of the scope of this budget. So I'd like to understand exactly what that means in terms of the budget, because I kind of, I'm just a little confused how that actually is going to work as it relates to this budget. So would like to understand that a little bit more, too. I'll stop there because I know we're time constrained. I have more, I'll email more. Thank you, Mayor, for giving us some time to do this.
Sure. Councilmember Stokes.
Yeah, I appreciate these particular things having to do with arts on this. So this is what we're gonna, when are we gonna set aside time to, which will take us more than 10 minutes? And this is good to get started on this, but this is the type of conversation we need to have. So just explain again when we're gonna do that? If not, tonight?
Those will be happening, the detailed conversations in the first three meetings of October, during the STA conversations, where we are going to dive deeper into each of those strategic target areas with the directors who provide services within those areas, to be able to answer questions and dive into each one of those spaces.
Yeah. I think that's good because it gives us some time, and I appreciate the kind of setting an example of what we should be doing on this and the questions and things. That's good. So just so we all know that. And it's going to be a long session, for sure. But very good, thank you.
I have emailed my questions, and I hope that as we dive deeper, if there's, if I don't understand why something's in the budget the way it is, that we get, you know, clear descriptions of what the budgeted item is so that we can have a discussion about the pros and cons of that. Thank you. Oh, and I do appreciate the human services budget addendum for youth and youth services. That's really appreciated. Deputy Mayor.
I also sent you six questions already. I was, but I wanted to thank you because now, and all of the hard work that you put into this, in this preliminary budget, from City Manager, John, Evan, all of the departments that prep for this, I know how much time and energy you are going to put in this. Thank you for explaining the great process. Love the transparency, love to see the budget book, the budget equity toolkit. I'm very proud of this council for the strategic target areas with their partnership with the staff. I think they are great, and I am so happy to see the alignment between the budget and those. So looking forward to learning more about the proposed budget and hearing from the community throughout the future processes. Thank you.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Great, thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. Just in kind of going through the agenda today and looking at some of the information that was included, I really appreciated the transmittal letter from the City Manager. I think it tells an encouraging story of the budget and the process used to create it, so I encourage everyone to take a look at that. I think the strong focus on housing supply and affordability in this budget is critically important. The creation of Bellevue's Office of Housing is a needed and significant step that makes it clear that housing affordability is such a critical issue in our community that we are doubling down on our effort to tackle it. Really liked the updated comprehensive financial policies and especially Section 7. Found it to be very informative, and I think community members would as well. Also encouraged by the recognition that even though the larger economy is improving and tax revenue is stabilizing, we're taking a cautious approach to investments with an eye towards priming the pump to make the most out of the economic situation in our community as it continues to improve. Glad that funds and reserve are being taken a look at. Certainly look forward to hearing more from the community and being able to provide you with some additional feedback as we move forward. I think the three community information sessions, two more public hearings, three study sessions, and a follow-up session are really going to help us to make sure that we're on top of the work and understand it. I think going forward, I'm going to be kind of curious, you know, we are looking at adding to the property tax, so I just think it's always good to think about how much of that property tax that we all pay goes to the city and then to what the average would be for a household if we adopt the proposed 1% property tax. Thank you for all your hard work so far, look forward to continuing.
Okay, Councilmember Lee.
Well, I'm not going to say how wonderful you are or how terrible you are, but as you know, this is one of my favorite subject, and because money makes the world go around, and so it's very important. And so you're going to hear from us, from me. I don't want to go through this right now because there's a lot of questions, a lot of information given us. And I would like to ask the big picture, and then maybe some specific things on specific items. So I would request is that we have enough time in the future, or, you know, we will ask you, if we don't have any questions for you, then you've got lots of time. But if we do, I hope you will find out, and I hope that you will make sure that you have scheduled enough time for each of us so that we can go over some of these informations. So thank you.
Good advice. Thank you, Councilmember Lee. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, we have a direction item here, our Great Neighborhoods Program, so I will let our City Manager, Diane Carlson, introduce that for us.
Thank you, Mayor. And given the time, we are going to try to truncate the presentation to leave time for your comments on this one. So council initiated the Great Neighborhoods Program in 2018, and the staff tonight is going to provide a presentation with a review of the proposed next iteration of the program, and they will be requesting council direct staff to initiate the comp plan amendments to update the Crossroads and Newport Neighborhood Area Plans beginning in '24 and '25, and provide a recommendation for the next set of the Neighborhood Area Plan updates. So we have, from the Community Development Department Director, Emile King, Tara Johnson, Acting Planning Director, and for the first time with the council, Senior Planner, Toon Dooling. And with that, I'll hand it over to Emile.
Thank you for the introduction, City Manager Carlson, and good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and members of council. Tonight, we are focusing on two items where we would like direction. The first is launching this year's Neighborhood Area Planning Process, and then we will be going over the next two neighborhoods that we would launch in 2025, and then the two after. going over the next two neighborhoods that we would launch in 2025 and then the two after in 2026 as well and the rationale for those recommendations. The agenda tonight is a presentation with a brief background on the Neighborhood Area Planning Process and how it relates to the current comp plan update that is with the city council right now. Well, they'll, we'll then go into some detail on the Great Neighborhoods planning process, some of the scope elements and the community engagement. We have used a continuous improvement approach to learn from the first two that we did in Northeast and Northwest to reflect that in a improved scope of work for this one. And then finally, we will be asking for council consideration at the end of this presentation tonight.
So we want to start off with just giving the council a little bit of, just some context on what our purpose is with the Great Neighborhoods program and the next two plan updates. So here, we're really focusing on while the comprehensive plan looks at citywide policies, our intent here is to develop neighborhood plans that are relevant, community-driven, and reflective of both citywide and just really focusing at a local level. So a little bit of background, as Emile said, we initiated some of this work in 2018. Just to give you a quick just summary, we have 16 neighborhood areas within the city and we start, launched this effort, our council launched this effort in 2018. We paused that once we started the periodic update in 2022, so we've completed two plans. And then we'll go over as part of the presentation just the sequence of future plan updates as well. Within the overall comprehensive plan, Volume One includes, which is part, of course, you're very familiar with, we presented a lot of the changes at your meeting last week, includes citywide policies, so they apply citywide, really focused on a number of the elements that are required under state law, land use, transportation, housing, for example. And Volume Two includes all our subarea plans, so plans for the various neighborhood areas within the city. The focus here, as I said before, with the Neighborhood Area Planning Process is really to focus on neighborhood-specific policies and goals. So we're really looking at aspects that are very unique to various areas of Bellevue. So a little bit on what we've completed to date, so after council launched the Great Neighborhoods program in 2018, we started work on Northwest and Northeast in, we started that work actually in 2020 and completed that to align with our comprehensive plan amendment cycle, annual amendment cycle in 2021. And as Emile alluded to earlier on, we really, we really paused and looked back at the feedback we heard from the community during the first two updates of those two subarea plans. We heard a lot from the community and we'll talk more about how that's really informed our scope changes, but we heard a lot from the community about the need for the plan really being more meaningful to them. So really considered some of that feedback as we've developed the scope. What staff is proposing is the next, next iteration of plans. Actually, we got council direction at the time to have, to really focus our next two updates on Crossroads and Newport Hills, sorry, Crossroads and Newport. So just want to highlight a little bit on what our proposed future updates are going to be and the, and the staff rationale for, for why we're sequencing these updates. So there are a number of other areas within the city, of course. A number of these plans, except for Northeast and Northwest, have not been updated since, some of them since the late 80s, early 90s. So a lot has changed within, within these areas within the city. So determining the sequence of future phasing, we really looked at neighborhood areas based on, you know, changes that have occurred there, respective equity needs, and then planning for future important policy initiatives like future light rail planning or transit, planning around transit. We also looked at, if you can see, Northwest and Northeast are on two separate sides of the city. So we looked at the advantages of sequencing plans that are proximate to each other. So that's why you'll see some additional recommendations. So for the '25-'26 cycle, we're proposing East Gate and Factoria. Those are also both designated countywide centers, so there's an advantage with really focusing some of our planning efforts there and align, aligning that with transportation needs. And then for the '26-'27 cycle, would be looking at Lake Hills and West Lakes and Mamish. So with that, we're gonna talk about the Neighborhood Area Planning Process and talk a little bit about the scope.
Thank you, Tara. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of council. The Neighborhood Area Planning Process is structured into four phases and will take about a year to complete. In the discover phase, we focus on setting expectations and building awareness, engaging with diverse groups to articulate core values and identify issues and priorities in each neighborhood area. Then during the define phase, we work with the community to develop strategies and to draft plan elements, turning those initial ideas into actionable policies. And then next, in the refine phase, we gather feedback to resolve any outstanding issues, revise the draft plans, and prepare them for adoption. And finally, in the adopt phase, the plans are reviewed by the Planning Commission and then brought to council for final review and adoption. The key elements of a Neighborhood Area Plan are listed here, land use, urban design, neighborhood identity, public realm, and mobility hubs. And together, these elements center around strengthening neighborhood areas' unique identity and community gathering places as Bellevue plans for its future growth. And I will go into more detail for each of these elements in the next few slides. Through its extensive community engagement, the Neighborhood Area Planning Process provides a platform to set direction for a neighborhood area's future growth through its, in terms of its land use. And during the planning process, property owners can initiate site-specific amendments to the future land use map. To be a part of the Great Neighborhoods process, the planning process, any proposed map amendment would need to meet established criteria. These criteria are meant to ensure that a proposed land use, land use change would support and strengthen community gathering spaces, reflect the neighborhood's identity, and improve the pedestrian experience in those areas. And this land use element is aligned with other ongoing city initiatives that are relevant to neighborhood centers as a type of mixed-use area in Bellevue. For example, the FAR Phase Two, Lucca, council initiated this Lucca or Land Use Code Amendment in December 2022 to allow higher densities for residential, to incentivize residential development, including affordable housing, over commercial development in mixed-use areas of the city, including those found in Crossroads and Newport. The urban design framework will provide guidance for strengthening community gathering spaces, including those neighborhood centers that I mentioned before. Relevant examples of existing neighborhood centers can be found in these two neighborhood areas. For instance, the Crossroads Mall and Newport Hill Shopping Center, as well as other commercial and mixed-use areas. This framework will include concept maps visualizing key community gathering spaces and the community's ideas to enhance them, combined with supporting plan policies. This approach will help to support the creation of vibrant, attractive places that reflect the community's identity. Neighborhood identity and the public realm are essential elements for fostering a sense of place and creating a sense of belonging in our communities and our neighborhood areas. And neighborhood identity is about recognizing and enhancing the unique characteristics in the built and in the natural environment of our neighborhood area. And that can include elements such as gateways, landmarks, natural edges, and activity nodes in those neighborhood areas. And we will create a concept map that identifies these elements and develop policies to support and enhance them as each neighborhood area grows and evolves over time. Second, the public realm refers to all publicly accessible spaces such as streets, sidewalks, trails, natural areas, and these spaces are where community life happens and plays a critical role in, in a neighborhood. Through our extensive community engagement, public realm needs will be identified that can inform future decision-making around capital improvements. And potential public realm improvements could be anything from upgrading sidewalks to adding street trees or lighting or improving park connections. Mobility hubs is another key element of the Neighborhood Area Planning Process. Our planning work for this element is meant to develop plan policies around local accessibility and neighborhood connectivity. Integrating multiple modes of transportation such as public transit, biking, or walking, and providing easy connections between those modes can make it easier for community members to get around. And our intent is to plan for improved neighborhood connectivity through mobility hubs, serving as focal points for transit, biking, and pedestrian access. These places will improve connectivity, reduce reliance on single occupancy vehicles, and promote sustainable transportation choices. Mentioned it a few times, but community engagement is at the heart of the Great Neighborhoods program. Our strategy focuses on equitable participation and ensuring that all voices in the community are heard, especially those historically underrepresented. We will use various methods to reach the community, both in person and online, to gather feedback that reflects the full diversity of each neighborhood area. And our engagement efforts will continue through each phase of the process and build upon our relationship-building efforts to date that started over the summer, to create plans that resonate with the community and address her specific needs for undertaking several strategies, including hiring a cultural outreach assistant for the Korean community, as well as targeted outreach to schools, faith-based organizations, local business owners, and older adults, among others. And then finally, meeting the community where they are by attending community events and meetings, hosting open houses, sending a mailed questionnaire to all households, and various online engagement tools.
That completes our presentation, Mayor. Thank you for letting me share the proposed work and the recommendations for the, the neighborhood plans in '25 and '26.
Great. Hey, welcome, Toon. Good to have you.
Thank you.
And thank you for all, for the great presentation. Let's start with a motion.
I move to direct staff to initiate work on the comprehensive plan amendments to update the Crossroads and Newport Neighborhood Area Plans in 2024, 2025, consistent with Land Use Code 2030I, 130B3, and provide a recommendation on the next set of Neighborhood Area Plan Updates, including for East Gate and Factoria in 2025, 2026, and Lake Hills and West Lakes and Mamish in 2026, 2027.
Second. Pardon me.
Okay, we'll open it for comments or questions, but I'm really hoping that we can move quickly with this. Okay, Councilmember Zion, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Well, I'm excited to see this come before us because I am in the Newport neighborhood and the last time we, we did work, our neighborhood was actually in Factoria. So this will actually be the first time that my neighborhood's actually within the Newport neighborhood. I guess the couple of comments I want to make is, one, let's get that one out of the way, the future areas, love the fact that they are contiguous and the order, so thank you for that. Just want to make sure that within, especially Newport, there are a lot of micro neighborhoods. We are bisected by 118th and Coal Creek and 405 and so how you actually do that outreach and whether there's actually kind of micro neighborhoods within that neighborhood will be important. There are a lot of those areas where there is no neighborhood association or community club, so how we find ways to engage in a community that hasn't had that kind of coalition piece will be important. Like the fact that you're expanding the cultural outreach assistance as well as engaging with students. My, my ask is that as we work with especially Crossroads, that's very diverse, how you set the table for inclusive facilitation to make sure all the voices are heard, because culturally, there are some cultures where speaking up when others are very vocal may not be their, their natural style. So just focusing on that. And then I would say that especially for Newport, I think it'll be really especially important for community gathering places, transportation safety and congestion, lots of cut-through traffic in that area, it's very hilly. Like the fact that you're focusing on mobility hubs. I do think that there are some, some challenges in the Newport neighborhood just because unlike Crossroads where you're not bisected by two very heavily trafficked roads. So I do think how we create that cohesion within that neighborhood's gonna be really important. So I look forward to that as an active participant in that neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Noonhouse.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Emile and Tara and Toon. Sounds of Dutch descent, yes, well, welcome aboard. How hat it? I just have one question, just regarding the outreach piece. Has that outreach already begun in Newport and in Crossroads?
Yeah, so over the summer, we have done initial relationship building with people who've been involved in prior planning processes as well as like community-based organizations to sort of get a feel of how we can best engage with them and the people that they represent during the planning process.
Okay. So and then my, my follow-up to that, and I'm glad we're already starting to do that, how are we going to, and I say we, the city, but as part of this outreach, going to balance all those competing interests regardless of which neighborhood is currently, you know, conducting that, that outreach? But how are we gonna, how are we gonna balance all those competing interests in, in terms of what comes back to us as well? I mean, that might be a very nuanced question depending on the topic and, and, and the issue and how many folks you speak to, but I just want to make sure that we're gonna have a very good idea from residents in terms of what they want for their neighborhood, not what we think they want or what we think will work for that neighborhood. I want to hear from residents, I want to hear what they want. And, and I just want that to be, to be very clear. I, I mean, that, that sounds very straightforward, but sometimes I've seen these reports come forward and, and, you know, after we do outreach and it's not always clear exactly what they're, they're, they're getting at, I guess, or what, what, what their vision is. So, so I don't need an answer on that today, but unless you want to speak to it, but it's just for, for, for me and I'm sure for all my colleagues here, it's just really important that we're hearing their voice in terms of what's, what's important and how they see their neighborhood growing and especially that identity piece, which is very important, be it a, a micro neighborhood or a larger neighborhood. They got a lot of pride in that and they want to see that continue, so I want to make sure that we're working with them hand-in-hand that it does. So thank you. Go ahead if you want to.
Just, that, that's one of the areas where we really look for continuous improvement, so how we deploy our staff and any consultant resources to really hear what the neighborhood wants in a process is something that's front of mind for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Stokes.
Oh, yeah, I, I agree with your, what you're talking about here and this, this is really great to get, get this going because these are, what, six neighborhoods that really are kind of behind in a lot of growth. I do want to, and I agree with you on having, making sure we work with the neighborhood, but also please keep in mind that the neighborhood is not just one group of citizens, people living there. It's, it's, we have to be sure we're getting everybody there and into it and sometimes we get bogged down because of that. And, and it could go both ways. Some people may want to be going different ways and all, not putting anything about any group particularly, but just make sure that we look at everybody working in that and working, because they, they deserve to have things that have been done in the other city, you know, other parts of the city and all. But it's, it's a, it's really good and it looks like you have a very, very well-laid-out program going forward on this and putting it together. I think it's, it's a lot better, seems a lot better organized at this stage than sometimes we have in the past. It's a, so I'm looking forward to it going forward and, and I think we can do it in a way that will be very positive for everybody.
I concur with my colleagues. Thank you.
I concur with my colleagues and looking forward to see your work in the Planning Commission and then in this body. A great experience on the previous work, Northwest and North-
and Northeast Bellevue. Hopefully, we learn about what we did not perfectly there, as you mentioned, improvement. And I really, really ask you to leverage technology to enhance the community engagement and participation in neighborhood planning process. There are lots of innovative technologies out there that we can use and engage our public. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. I agree with my colleagues as well. I think the plan looks great, looks very solid. I appreciate that we have a variety of engagement tools, so that everyone has a chance to to be able to communicate and use a tool that that serves them. I wanted to just follow on what Councilmember Zahn said. I think, you know, I'm glad that we have this time to do it, because we are working on areas of the city, and people might not naturally know which that they belong or live in that area. So Newport is more than Newport Hills, obviously, right? It's lake heights, it's Newport shores, it's Greenwich Crest, others possibly, but I think, you know, we need to have that time to be able to reach everyone. Crossroads stretches to west of one hundred and forty, east to one hundred and sixty-fourth, to Bell Red, to Main in some areas. So these are big areas, it's going to take a while to reach out to these folks and make sure they have a chance to be involved in the process. Just kind of curious, what what can folks do to kind of be, do we have a website? Can they sign up for notifications?
Yes, we have two project pages, one for crossroads, one for Newport, that are going live on engaging Bellevue, as well as an updated webpage that is already live. That also includes the materials for tonight.
Okay, great, thank you. And then too, just, you know, I know when this, I wasn't obviously on council in twenty-eighteen, but I know that there were a couple of certain objectives that council stressed at the time, to develop neighborhood area plans that reflect current citywide and neighborhood priorities and address issues and opportunities that are relevant to the local community, and to conduct a planning process that is based on a collaborative partnership with the city and neighborhoods. And so to me, this, you know, process is about what, you know, a subarea can expect, what's unique to it, and also, too, how does it play a role in in supporting the citywide needs? So what do you get, but also, what do you give? So I think those objectives were important, and there's something else certainly keep in mind as we move forward. So, thank you.
Thanks. Councilmember Lee.
How does this interact with the other city planning process, such as what we are just are working on, this twenty forty-four planning process? For example, like Newport Hills, especially in this region, like you mentioned, Newport could be a lot wider than Newport Hills, but whatever we do affect may, may not, I don't know, I want to hear from you.
Sure, that's a great question.
How does it interact? How do you handle it?
So with the with the periodic update, which we presented to you last last week, and we'll be having an additional study session next week, on that really looks at all areas of the city, our future land use map. So we looked at changing land use designations, we looked at broadening them, we added capacity, so we added more capacity in a lot of, in some of these areas that we're looking at. So both crossroads and Newport both had additional density that we're we're looking at. So we looked at everything from a citywide perspective. Now we have an opportunity to go back and look just at a neighborhood level and see what's changed within that neighborhood. There are a lot of policies that are within those plans that are pretty, pretty, some of them are antiquated, they need updating. One good example is there's a policy in the crossroads subarea that says there should there shall be no multifamily development in a certain part of crossroads. So that really does not align with our citywide strategy, because we're adding, we're adding more capacity, and it also conflicts with some of the state legislation. So that's just one example, but there are a number of policies that really could could use reevaluation, there's opportunity to add new policies as we have feedback from the community, and they identify what their key priorities are.
So how are you going to manage all those? Are you already doing it, or you have a plan, how to do that?
So the scope of work that we presented to you this evening really identifies our process, so it'll go go through, maybe we can just scroll back. Our process covers a one-year timeframe, so after we get council direction to start the work on the comprehensive plan amendments for these subarea plans, we'll start engaging with the community, we'll have engagement events, we'll hear from the community about what their key priority areas are. Just give me one second, and I can advance to the... So this gives you a timeline of how we're proceeding through the various phases for the subarea plan. And then we'll be engaging with the planning commission, they'll be providing recommendations on the policy changes as well. And then we'll hold a hearing with the planning commission, most likely next June, July, and then we'll come back to council with the planning commission's recommendation next fall.
Yeah, I hope that the residents understand, not confused, by various process, various activities you're doing. They may, hopefully, will not misunderstand one from the other. I think you need to give them the overview, so that they know what you're talking about, what they're looking at, how they wrap it together. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I have a question. How much time do you think that we need for the presentation of our next? I'm not trying to rush, I'm trying to plan ahead.
The presentation was scheduled for twenty. I'll ask Michael whether or not he believes it will take twenty minutes.
I do believe remedy is a gift, and we can try to move this along.
Well, I'm actually not trying to rush you. I think we need to take as much time, this is a big deal. I just want to extend the meeting now, so we don't have to interrupt anybody, as we usually do, so I wonder if there's a motion to extend the meeting to ten fifteen.
I move the extension of our meeting to ten fifteen.
Seven.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, let's go.
Okay, well, I will be very brief here. The resolution that is before you tonight is the, is a result of three-year process, Bellevue Airfield Park Master Plan, and Director Michael Shiasaki from our Parks and Community Service Department, and Pam Furman, capital project manager, will present the results of this work and a recommendation for the council to consider adopting the Airfield Park Master Plan this evening.
Thank you, City Manager Carlson. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and members of the City Council. So, good evening, and so today we return with the Bellevue Airfield Park Master Plan update, and it is the final step, and I'll say, just a long process of both robust public engagement and environmental review, and all in citing a new aquatic center in the city and updating the parks' master plan. And I'll just have to say, we really look forward to beginning to implement that master plan. I did just want to take a moment and introduce the park board chair who is here this evening, Rowena Kleema is here. Thank you, Rowena, for being here. So, tonight, if you can move on to the next one, so tonight, council is being asked to consider adopting the resolution updating the Bellevue Airfield Park Master Plan. It was at your April third meeting in twenty twenty-three, so about a year and a half ago, the council concurred with the park board's recommendation on the on the recommended master plan update, and they directed staff to complete environmental review on that preferred plan. That environmental review is now complete. So, so quickly, so we'll quickly share background on how we got to today, we'll review the current master plan that was approved in twenty twelve, we'll provide an overview and of the public outreach and the feedback we heard as a part of that update process, and then we'll review the master plan update, what's in it, share the environmental review process and the determination from that process, and then discuss next steps. So quickly, this is the Airfield Park site, it's twenty-seven acres in size, and it's located just east of Robins Wood Park and just north of the Interstate ninety corridor. In two thousand and two, the council authorized the purchase of the properties that make up Airfield Park with the intent of developing an active community park site. So today, except for the trails and the, let's see, I think I skipped ahead, yes, today, except for the trails on the site, the Bellevue Airfield Park site is currently undeveloped. Let's see, so I'll say that the site is really, it's well-located to support active recreation. As I said, it's located just off of Interstate ninety, it's bordered by residential neighbors to the west and to the north, that's shown in yellow, and office and business uses to the east, south, and west, shown in purple. There are significant forested buffers on that west and north side. Vehicular access to the site is from the south, off of I ninety, off of one hundred and sixtieth. And I'll say, significant in considering development in the future are the historical uses of the past. The site was an airfield until nineteen eighty-three, and it was a municipal landfill from nineteen fifty-one through nineteen sixty-four. So from a site development perspective, there are definitely some constraints on that site, and they will fully be considered as we move forward from a master plan stage into design. So for context, just a couple of slides that show the existing well-developed trails on the site, and the slide in the upper right is the open field area where where there is the landfill. So also, from a site development perspective, there are sixteen acres on the north side of the property that that really do have limitations in terms of development. There's steep slopes, there's existing forests, and there is proximity to residential neighbors. It's really the southern portion of the site that is more developable. It it is relatively flat, we have commercial and office uses as neighbors, but of course we do know that a landfill covers a portion of that. So this is the council's adopted master plan, the current master plan for the site. The northern portion shows wooded picnic area in that northwest corner, so that, the history of that is definitely there as a picnic area. It also shows trails, and it maintains a minimum buffer of about a hundred feet between our residential neighbors. In many areas, it's probably twice that, as a as a very generous buffer. The primary changes between this plan and the master plan update are in the southern portion of the site, as shown on this, in the current master plan, there are two lighted sports field areas, there are trail connections, play playground, restrooms, and parking. And it does include the expansion of an off-leash area at Robins Wood Park, which is only a quarter mile away. So here's a bit of background specifically on the aquatics facility. You know, the aquatics facility, the the sighting of this, this is really the culmination of these three previous council-directed city studies on feasibility, first in oh-nine, and twenty seventeen, and in twenty twenty. So I think there's been a lot of background research and study in helping cite this, and I think through this long sighting process, it was found that this really is the only city-owned site that is large enough to accommodate an aquatics facility. So citing was definitely a part of the studies that moved forward. There was also a King County regional study that moved forward that really cited the need for additional aquatics facilities in the county. It was at your October twenty twenty-first, twenty twenty-one meeting that the council directed staff to begin on the master plan update, to understand current community preferences and study the impacts on this site. And then last, on this timeline, we signed a memorandum of understanding with Splashboard, our primary partner on this, better defining how we move forward as as partners in this So moving on to a section that wanted to spend a little bit of time talking about the outreach and the feedback we heard in this long community process. So the public outreach began in June of twenty twenty, it began with a kickoff meeting with the park board, we did a sidewalk with the community, held a couple of large community workshops, did then another review with the park board that year, and then came back to the council for a briefing late in the year. That public process continued into twenty twenty-three with a final community workshop, which was super, I'll say, super well-attended, about over a hundred and seventy people attended that meeting. And then in February, the park board made a recommendation on a preferred master plan update. And then on April third, the council considered the community outreach and the feedback and design considerations, and the park board's recommendation, and it was at that point that you directed us to begin environmental review on this preferred plan. You know, they, I'll just say a couple other things, so that whole planning process also, it was a combination of those meetings, a lot of correspondence, and three public surveys that were conducted as a part of that. So what we heard, these these were overall themes that we that came back to us, these were kind of consensus themes, and I will say, the city's really committed to these design and development objectives. Clearly, we want this to be inclusive, meaning it's welcome to all, it includes a wide variety of uses and activities, it be a safe park development site, meaning good, really well-designed, and including SEPTED principles, which is crime prevention through environmental design, meaning sightlines, and opening up the the site of it for surveillance and security reasons. We also want it to be environmentally responsive, and that means improvements that address stormwater on the site, and also the aging landfill systems that are there. We also want positive park activities and really quality maintenance and management of the site. And last but not least, we want to be, we want to remain true to the intent when this site was purchased, and that it be an active community park. So here's some of the specific feedback we heard as a part of the final survey that was conducted at the last meeting, and then it continued online after that third public meeting. You know, I I think this says that we kind of found the right balance between active and passive, so a majority, a small majority said we kind of nailed it, and then another quarter said, oh, it's a little too passive, another quarter said, oh, it's a little too active. So I think we did kind of find a sweet spot in this master plan. So when people are asked, well, what are the two passive program elements that you're most interested in? You know, trails, we always hear trails are number one in terms of parks' usage, and in addition to that, we heard about natural areas, which are a big part of the site. The flip side of this are active elements, and I think to no one's surprise, we heard a lot about pickleball, as you did, you heard about that a little bit this evening, and then, of course, we heard about the need for aquatics in our city. And then because there was quite a bit of discussion about this picnic area in the woods in the northwest corner of the site, so we asked that that question very specifically in the survey, would you support this picnic-covered picnic area shelter in in the northwest corner? And clearly, the majority said, yes, we would like to see that be in this master plan update as it was in the current master plan. And so before I turn this over to Pam and walk you through what's in the master plan update, I just wanted to spend a brief moment talking about an item that has been suggested to us in this process, and that is retaining some existing parking on the site. And this is parking, and I don't know, do we have a pointer on that at all, Pam? So this parking exists on the eastern edge, kind of the curved area where the pickleball courts are shown, and then further south. So about a hundred and forty stalls of parking exist there, they were developed as a part of the Boeing campus, which is directly east, it used to be a part of the Boeing campus. And there's been the suggestion that we retain that parking as a part of our development. And I'll say, for us, if it made sense from a financial and an access standpoint, we would, of course, retain would, of course, retain them if it made sense financially. Well, here's the reason why we, we have not included those, um, existing parking stalls. Part of it is the elevation of where the aquatic center is proposed needs to sit a bit high on the site. We're trying to stay out of the landfill waste as much as possible. That existing parking sits very low. And actually, to make it accessible, we would need to lower the aquatic center, go more into the landfill material to say, to use that existing parking, and from a financial standpoint, it just does not make sense. The other reason is it's old parking. It was created about forty years ago. The stormwater systems are out of date and not up to current codes, and actually, the stormwater system continues off our site onto the Boeing site. So really, we would need to disconnect it and redevelop that whole parking lot should we retain it. So I think we have some good reasons. We really have studied this closely, because if it was going to save us some money in the long run and make sense, we, of course, would retain that. So with that, I will turn, uh, uh, the presentation over to Pam and take it away.
Right. Thanks, Michael. At your, as Michael mentioned, at your April third meeting, um, the city council concurred with the Parks and Community Services Board and designated a preferred Bellevue Airfield Park master plan, which is on your screen before you. The master plan contains an aquatic facility in the southwest portion of the site, uh, over the open meadow and landfill area. It contains eight pickleball courts, restroom, children's playgrounds, splash pad, multi-use flex field, and basketball court that could be full-size. A terrace lawn that looks towards the stormwater, the existing stormwater ponds. As in the previous plan, accessible picnic facilities are shelters and parking is included in the northwest portion of the site. The updated master plan provides, um, opportunities to offer recreation and, uh, great distance of buffer to the adjacent neighborhood. The plan includes design objectives to conserve tree canopy to the extent feasible and provide enough parking to support park activities by maximizing use of the surrounding shared parking of the office complexes. The plan supports the elements of the original master plan that commits the city to expanding off-leash facilities at Robins Wood, and provides the opportunity to improve environmental conditions by updating the nineteen eighty vintage landfill systems to today's standards. The concept for the aquatics facility on the next slide proposes a full-service aquatics facility that's approximately a hundred and thirty thousand square feet and addresses both recreational and competition needs. Both a twenty-five-yard, um, pool as well as a fifty-meter pool, diving and fitness classroom and meeting spaces. Programming will support broad-based community access equity, addressing all ages and ability. The site allows for aquatic facility and complimentary outdoor recreation and open space park development. At that same meeting, um, as Michael also mentioned, uh, the city council directed, uh, staff to proceed with that preferred plan to the environmental review. As is typical of environmental review per the State Environmental Policy Act, it is required of city plans prior to city council taking action to adopt a plan. The environmental process offered additional opportunities for community engagement and comment throughout this past year permitting process. The environmental coordinator reviewed and assessed a variety of environmental conditions such as air quality, uh, soil contamination, water quality, as is listed extensively on your slide. On August first, um, the environmental determination was issued that the master plan does not have a probable significant adverse impact upon the environment. And the determination found that an environmental impact statement was not required or needed, but it did include a condition that the Department of Ecology review any landfill-related development per Washington, per the Model Toxics Control Act. And the la, and the next one is, um, funding for the design and construction, um, is, um, provided by, for Bellevue Airfield Park is provided by both the two thousand and eight levy as well as the twenty twenty-two levies. And as is typical of parks of this scale and scope, design and construction of the park would be phased. We'll be returning to council as we work to determine the best phasing of development and proposals to award design and construction contracts. We'll also return to propose and update aquatic facility partnership agreements as they evolve in the future.
And you can see our estimated constructions, uh, phase for, for phase one. So once again, we're here to ask for your consideration in adopting the resolution updating the, uh, Bellevue Airfield Park master plan, and we are here to answer your questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Let's, um, start by extending the meeting again. Is there a motion to extend to ten-thirty?
I move the, I move our meeting to be extended to ten-thirty.
Seven.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, who's our parks liaison? Is that Councilmember Hamilton? Why don't you start us off?
It is indeed, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay.
Um, thank you for the presentation. Um, certainly glad to see our, uh, Parks Board Chair, Kleema, here. So, and I want to just take a minute to thank all the community members that have been engaged in this process. Uh, Michael, you and your team created a great engagement process. Um, and when I was on the Parks Board and going through this, I said at the time, and certainly agree now, that the engagement process, uh, could not have been more comprehensive or inclusive. Um, the Parks Board was highly engaged in the whole process. Um, and obviously, as you mentioned, too, council, uh, identified its preferred design. Um, now that the environmental review is complete, um, we're in a position to give our final blessing and, um, move forward in the process with the, uh, final master plan. Um, you know, while, obviously, this is a very extremely important, uh, part of the process, I really see this as more of a formality than anything. Um, we've come together as a community, had a highly engaged collaborative process. We've had honest, difficult, uh, conversations. I think I had some of the most productive disagreements with folks along the way in this, uh, whole process. So, and I just appreciate the relationships that, that I formed and, and some that were strengthened in the process. So really, the if we move forward question has already been answered. Uh, we decided twenty-two years ago when we bought the property that we wanted active recreation. Twelve years ago, had a master plan that would bring that vision to life. Three years ago, the council directed you to update that plan, and you did so. Um, you know, we're looking at a facility now, our current aquatics facility is fifty years old, and I think it has gone well past what we all thought it, it would. You know, when it was built, we were less than half the size we are now, so, you know, as we have grown, so has the need for aquatics. So I do want to be sure, though, that as we move forward, that we take into account the concerns that have been raised by some community members, and you thankfully, uh, addressed those here tonight. So I think, uh, tree canopy, that's critical. Um, I think we've, we've reached some good milestones in the city, and, and we certainly don't, don't want to go back. So when trees are removed, I hope we put in every effort we can to, uh, plant some new ones. Um, we have, uh, you know, a lot of animals that's been, uh, that have been identified that live in that kind of northern part of the park. Um, I think we, we want to do everything we can to minimize the impact to them. You talked about the security concern, concerns, so those are built in. Um, and I, and two, you know, as we're, are looking at transportation options, how folks are going to get to and from the park, I certainly hope we take a look at options that don't require people to drive. Um, and then, two, the contamination, this will be a, a great opportunity to upgrade, uh, the systems we have in place, uh, to treat the contamination that is there. So, again, I appreciate the robust process. I'm interested in hearing from my colleagues and anxious to vote in favor of adopting the final plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hamilton. Councilmember Lee.
Thank you. Uh, great, great work. I do have a couple of questions that's presented, uh, heard from the public comment. Uh, landfill, you know, that's a concern. And, uh, when you describe, uh, the, I quite say that it's a set on the landfill. And, uh, so, uh, you know, the old parking, you know, has a concern of the difference. And so, uh, there's a requirement for DOE, right? They still have yet to determine whatever they're going to determine, we don't know. So, so give me a few bars as to what have we find, figure out from the landfill liability, whatever liability that might be. And, uh, say, you know, do we look forward enough to make sure that we can manage and handle and mitigate that if there's a liability? That's the first question. Then I have, uh, one more. Go ahead, please.
So, you know, I, I believe we're going into this project with our eyes wide open in terms of, we know there has been some testing, we will do additional testing on what is below, uh, any part that we are actually adding building. And you did hear that, you know, perhaps an aquatic center has never been built on a landfill, but many a building have been built over landfills in the past. I think one of the things we're looking at, though, is, so we have an old, uh, failing cap out there that we know as a part of this project, we would bring that up to, uh, current standards. So I think in many ways, we can make this site better than it is today. You heard the concerns of things that are out there now. Well, that's partly because that landfill infrastructure is old and does need to be replaced, and that is some of the, uh, gas, uh, uh, distribution system and some of the, the, uh, testing wells that need to be, uh, replaced. And so there is a need to actually get into the landfill a bit to replace those systems. And so we know that is a part of this project. So I, I think we were, like I said, we're going into this eyes wide open.
Okay. So basically, you're saying that you know, and you know how to manage it, and you know when you manage it, it would be okay?
Well, you know, you know.
As best as you can.
As best as we can, correct. Yes.
Never know for sure. I think that's the message you should tell the public.
Okay.
Right? Because they don't seem to understand it, they're asking this question. You know, so be sure. Yeah, we cannot be a hundred percent sure, but at least we know, like you said, with eyes wide open. And there may be potentially some problem. They say, well, it's never, you know, you never have a building on landfill before. Maybe there is. Tell them. It, it has been done before, somewhere, we know. Okay? So be sure. Second question, the parking lot, it says, oh, needs to be done, so now we don't use the parking lot. So what do you do with the parking lot? Just leave it the way it is?
Well, actually, that, that area, because it's flat.
Yeah.
Uh, is ideal for the pickleball courts, which are shown in that area in the updated master plan.
Okay. So that'd be okay, even though it's a landfill space?
Yeah.
Okay? Thank you.
Pickleball.
Okay. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, thank you for a great presentation, and I don't know how many years you have been working in this. I can see it, uh, the passion that you have for this. Uh, thank you, Councilmember Hamilton, liaison, and park board chair and park board members, uh, and all of the community who has been engaged. Uh, very happy to see the environmental study has been done and showed no significant adverse impact on the environment. And I'm also very happy to see if, at the moment, we are doing landfill, we also need to go through some process for environment. I have one question and have one comment. In the, thank you for answering the parking, uh, configuration proposal at one of our, uh, it was one of in our, uh, email, and I think that makes sense, your response makes sense to me. Uh, the questionnaire about the picnic, when you send that questionnaire, does the participant knew about the trade-off? If we do this picnic, we are going to lose this many trees. Were they aware of the trade-off of having picnic, or was the question just, hey, do you want picnic? Because I think if they didn't know what the trade-off is, of course, everyone should say they'd love picnic, but if maybe they knew the trade-off, maybe the answer would be different.
And, you know, I guess at this point in design, we didn't, we weren't able to say, you know, that picnic shelter means three fewer trees in the area. I think, though, on the master plan update, it shows an area that is not fully treed. So I think we tried to represent that it has a, a bit more of an open canopy than the rest of the forest in that, uh, in that area. So I think we represented it that way. I'm not sure that everyone who took, uh, the survey, because some, some were taken online, actually had the benefit of seeing that, uh, when they took it. So, yeah, we didn't equate it that closely, so.
Thank you.
And certainly, the picture of the master plan was included within the survey, so you could observe, um, a cleared area. Oh, I, I can share that. And certainly, as part of the environmental submission, uh, tree canopy and tree count was submitted.
Thank you. And my comment is about the landfill and airfield. Uh, I think engineers today are equipped well with advanced technology and method to mitigate the risk. There are many of them available. And I think by developing the site with proper safeguard, uh, we not only create new opportunities for community, but also take an active role in rehabilitating this land. And I think that's very important. I think not touching it and leaving it, the site untouched, does not eliminate the risk of, that all of the risks that we are talking about. It simply delays the necessary action and allows the contamination to spread unchecked. So I'm very happy that through this process, we are doing the improvement that we should have done maybe a long time ago if the money was not an issue. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you so much.
Great. Councilmember Stokes.
Uh, first, I appreciate very much so far the, the comments from my, uh, colleagues, and, um, I'm really, really excited about this. Actually, uh, and Mayor Robinson also has been involved in this since, um, hmm, something like two thousand and nine, when we were on the Parks Board, and going through all that. Um, and I'm really glad we did not make that park like we were going to at that time. So one of these things we're delaying can give, gives, will give us something much, much better than, uh, a ball field and no swimming pool or anything else. And I'm also very excited, uh, as I've been a swimmer for a long time. I, I was on the, uh, swim team at, uh, Texas Tech and, uh, did, uh, working as lifeguards and working in scout camps and teaching swimming and, uh, and all that. So I'm just very, very excited that we're doing this, and I appreciate the fact, and I've been involved in this, and we've been watching this for a long time. And, uh, and it was really exciting to get the levy passed this last time, and the time before as well. So we've all put a lot of work into this, and, uh, so I think I was really glad to see coming to this that, uh, get it out here in the public and get the, get the information, really get people to understand what is going on, and your response to, uh, the, the issues that have been brought up are just, uh, really, really great. We know that, but we just, you, you need to get it out there. And I think, uh, my colleagues have also, uh, given some, you know, some ideas about how we work on this. We all need to make sure we get people to understand, this is going to be great. Uh, and it's going to be a great thing for the city. Uh, and, uh, so there's not much else that we can say, except let's get this thing going. And I, I think, uh, we're gonna, it's going to be very positive. Once we get over some of this and get people to understand what we're doing, I think we're going to have a lot of people saying, and be really glad to put this forward, and it's going to give Bellevue something that, uh, we've been needing for a long time, that any city our size and as actively as we are with outside things, with sports and things with our kids, with the families, this is something that will be a A-plus addition to this whole thing. So I'm very excited about it and really appreciate, uh, the responses and the work you've gone through over this. You, and, and you've been there a long time, and you just came on not too long ago, and you both have gotten together and really put this forward, and really appreciate the fact that your, the responsiveness to the public has been, been really good. So I'm ready to go, uh, and let's get out there, and I, I could actually come out and do some digging and help it. Thank you.
Okay, former, uh, former Parks Board member, Councilmember Newhouse.
I'd like to see that, actually, go get out there and, and, and see some of your swimming prowess, too. I didn't know. I didn't know that. Thank you, Michael, Pam, and thank you for your continued great stewardship of our parks in our, in our, in our city. I think my colleagues have already said pretty much what I wanted to say, but I want to thank you for the great outreach that we've done on this. It's, as you know, important to me that we hear all residents, and I think it's, you know, the recap that you provided as well in terms of when we purchased, what it was, intent was always to be active. Obviously, it's changed, but it's always meant to be, to be active. I appreciate you listening to those concerns and addressing them, you know, be it the environmental or, or I think what's been addressed previously about Bellevue College and then, and then also the design. And I think you're referring to, when you were talking about the parking lot with the cordials, and, yeah. So I really appreciate Court trying to find a balance there for all parties. And there were other parts of this design that I hope you will continue to look at or evaluate, but that was one of the, I guess, signature pieces of it. But I appreciate the fact that you took time to look at that and provide an explanation of, of, you know, what that parking lot might be ideally used for. So really appreciate that. And really want to give a shout out to our former colleague, Jennifer Robertson, who had been a champion of this for many, many years and helped move this along to where we are right now. And I'm sure she will be thrilled that we were moving this to that next step as well. So again, kudos all around, ready to move this forward as my colleagues are. Thanks.
Councilmembers on.
Yeah, I'll just start with, I'm also ready to adopt this updated master plan forward. I think it is a thoughtful balance, as my colleagues have talked about. I especially appreciate the fact that I think on page 13, where we talked about inclusive, safe, environmentally responsive and active, that within those four, I kind of see them as kind of guiding principles, that addressing the aging landfill and some of those challenges, to me, environmentally responsive could also be how we, as we start design, really minimize the amount of tree removal. And even in the park, in the picnic area, perhaps there's a way to have more treed, picnicked area and a little bit of open area. So I really believe that within the, the design concepts and guiding principles, we can make sure that that happens. And having aquatics and pickleball, we've heard so much about pickleball and having that flat area to be able to do that. Appreciate the fact that we're talking about a phased construction, so we can really look at what can we implement sooner rather than later, because although we're really excited to have Splash Forward as a partner, the, it's going to take a little bit to get funding for the full meal deal, but if there's a way to get started on some of the pieces that can be implemented sooner. And, you know, I, I think about the fact that we actually had one of our own, Audrey Kwan was on the artistic gymnastics Olympics team that won their silver medal from Bellevue High School, and I, I think about what's possible as we expand our aquatic facilities, that there's, I think, many more talented swimmers as well as those that are afraid of the water like me, that would really love to be able to learn how to swim someday. So I'm excited that we're going to adopt this tonight. Thanks.
So I'll be very quick. You know, I've talked to you about hopefully wanting to tap into that deep sewer line to help heat the pool. So you said you would look into that, and I appreciate that. You know, John Stokes and I were on the Parks Board when this original plan came before us, and I have a confession to make. They wanted to put a swimming pool and facility in at that time, and I voted against it, because I'm not sure why, but it didn't.
It's okay.
I know. And, you know, it was something I regretted. And, you know, we don't always make the first choice correctly, and I always regretted that. And having had the opportunity to put it in originally and then not doing it and being able to rectify that, I feel really good about it, because I really do want this to happen. I see the value of it. I've given it a tremendous amount of thought, both sides of it, and so I'm excited. So all those, do we have a, we have to put the motion out, so go ahead.
I move to adopt Resolution 10414, adopting the updated Bellevue Airfield Park master plan.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, great. And Susan, congratulations. You've worked very, very hard on this with, and your whole, your whole team, and we want to thank you. You really exemplify what community efforts are, and you've worked with your heart and best intentions for the people around you, and we will never forget that.
And I apologize for not mentioning you, too. I mentioned you, so thank you.
Okay.
She's done a tremendous amount.
With that, we are adjourned.